Good evening. We're going to call to order tonight the resumption of the administrative appeal that was before us yesterday for continuing this. Welcome. Today's the Town of Woodfin, Board of Adjustment, January 26th, special meeting. The board, let's see, first of all, I'd like to take attendance for role for tonight. So Stephanie.
Here.
Michael Bennett.
Patrizia.
Patrizia, apologize.
Here.
Scott Hanson.
Here.
Chris Daron.
Here.
And that's it. With that being said, the board will now take up the administrative appeal, continue the administrative appeal of Jessica and Alex Bernstein and the citizens of responsible land use for the determination of Shannon Tuck, interim planning director, contained in the letter dated September 30th, 22nd, 2022 concerning the Robin Hood Road Development.
And Mr. Chairman, before we get started, if I can just remind the board members, this is a quasi judicial decision or a quasi judicial hearing. It has some rules and regulations that we must follow. One of those is that we are to give each one of the parties due process and certainly not have a fixed opinion about the outcome of this hearing. And so I would just ask the members of the board to keep an open mind, be a fair umpire, don't hold the actions of any attorney against their client, listen to the evidence, make interpretations of the ordinance as you see fit, and then apply those interpretations to the facts that you hear from the witnesses. And so with that, Mr. Chairman's back with you.
Okay. Continue where we left off yesterday. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe Ms. Eisenhower was still on stand and she had just finished her draft by the town. She's still under oath. Do we need to read?
Yeah, no, I think she's still under.
Remind her for the chair.
Unless you did something.
Yeah, Ms. Eisenhower, you're still under oath.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's my job.
Thank you.
Ms. Eisenhower, my name is Josh Portnoy. I'm one of the attorneys representing the property owner in this case, HS Robin Hood Property Owner LLC. We appreciate you taking the time here. I think it was a long late night for everyone. So really what I'd like to kind of do, there might be a little duplication, but I'd kind of try to set some context and remind everyone of what your testimony was and maybe build on some of the topics that you had testified about late last night. And I'd like to really start where this began on May 17th, 2021, and that was the date when HS Robin Hood owner submitted its zoning application and initial site plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. My understanding from your testimony yesterday that you considered that submitted, that zoning application submitted on that date.
Correct.
Objection. I don't think that was the testimony that you gave nor a question asked about the submission date. And that's a key component of our view.
How do we pull the record in and check that or?
If you, if you know how you want to rule.
I could re-ask that question actually to make it a open-ended question. Ms. Eisenhower, did you consider the application submitted on, submitted as of May 17th, 2021?
Yes, I considered a complete application.
And yesterday, I believe you did testify that based on your review of that initial site plan that was with the application, you did not see any conditional uses requiring a quasi judicial hearing, correct?
Correct.
And then you also testified, and I believe it was under tab two, but I may be mistaken, it is RD 00A, you had communications with Chris Day at CDC that same day you received the site application, right?
Right.
Okay. And just for the record, Mr. Day is an engineer with Civil Design Consultants, which is a local design and civil engineering firm, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And do you work with Mr. Day and CDC fairly often?
I, yes, as a planning director, I did work for that firm often.
That's a fair point. In your role as a planning director, you would work with them fairly often?
Yes.
And I believe it was your testimony yesterday, too, that the October 2021 revised site plan responded to each of your questions and comments that you sent to Mr. Day on May 17th, 2021, correct?
Correct.
So just for the avoidance of doubt, any questions that were in the May 17th, 2021 email from you to Mr. Day were adequately addressed, in your opinion, by the October 2021 site plan?
That's correct.
And like the May 17th site plan that was submitted, the revised site plan that was submitted on October, in October of 2021, did not, that site plan also did not contain any conditional uses that required a quasi judicial hearing, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Henning, I believe also asked you last night about the need for a landscape plan and, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe your testimony was that a landscape plan from a licensed landscape architect was not required for purposes of submitting a zoning applicant, zoning compliance permit application, right?
Not for the purposes of submitting an application.
All right. If, are we still on tab one? Is that pulled up? If, do you have the record of decision actually in front of you?
No, I don't.
All right. If you could turn to tab one and it's RD 003. You could actually, yeah, for purposes of the board seeing on the screen, I think we can remove the split screen and just have the record of decision out. Do you see the portion where it says characteristics of site with requested alterations?
I do.
Okay. And there it says that for residential properties disturbing an acre or more and commercial properties with a lot size of at least one acre, a zoning compliance permit application will not be approved until you provide appropriate documentation from the Buncombe County Stormwater Office and Buncombe County Erosion Control, correct?
Correct.
My, my question to you then is, am I accurate that the practice of the town at the time when you were the zoning administrator was not to require those documents for purposes of submitting a zoning compliance permit application?
That is correct.
Jumping back, apologize for jumping back and forth in time, but when the October 2021 revised site plan was provided to you by HS Robin Hood owner, and I'll call it the old ordinance, which I believe was the ordinance you mentioned was enacted in October of 2018.
Right.
And then the new ordinance would be the one that was enacted in December, for purposes of old versus new, was the December 21st, 2021.
Right.
So am I correct in saying that when HS Robin Hood submitted the October 2021 site plan, the old ordinance was still in effect?
I'll object to that. Wouldn't present her qualified as an expert or having expertise in law and draws for a legal position as to what ordinance was in effect at the time which is the province of this board in this case.
I mean.
Can you, you can sustain, right, or overrule the objection? Do you want to hear the answer?
We want to hear the answer, yes.
So then you would overrule?
Overrule, then.
And I can just repeat the question another way, too. What version of the ordinance was in effect as of October of 2021?
We'll bring to our objection, if you call it this kind of non-expert, non-attorney, non-legal experience witness to offer an input which applicable code was in effect at that time.
All right. So from the board, they're asking her to answer a question that she may not be qualified to answer as per the other attorney. So.
If that was her position in the town, how would she not be qualified?
That's legal counsel.
Okay.
Do we all do that? Can we ask if that's a requirement of the position that she held to know what ordinances were in effect?
If you want to ask that question, you can ask that question before you make your decision.
So go ahead. Go ahead, Esther.
Sure. Who can we ask it to?
Her.
Okay. So the question that we had is, as part of your position that you held as the planning director, is it required that you know what ordinances are in effect?
Yes.
And how would you know that? How would you know? How would you decide? How would, on what would you base that because to know what ordinances are in effect?
Based on what's been codified in our, by, we use mini-code, so the list of ordinances that's in that book.
To clarify my objection, Mr. Chairman, for the board, this is a fact basis. So fact basis is considered to hear what they saw, what they did, those things. They can't offer opinions. That's what experts give. Because she's not been qualified as an expert. So she can definitely say, I used this code. I saw this thing. This is how I applied this in the context. But to offer the opinion about which one applied goes into the province of opinion.
Just to respond to that, the parties have already agreed that there's only two ordinances that are in effect in this case. One that went into effect in October of 2018 and another one that went into effect on December 21st, 2021. So there's only two at issue. It's more almost even a matter of common sense. I just need to get the testimony out of her that October is before the other version that's in effect here. And in her role, I mean, she just testified in her role, she's required to know what ordinance is in effect.
So the objection was raised again by Mr. Noor, and basically if you all want to hear what her answer is, you would overrule his objection.
Okay. We agree. We want to overrule?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to overrule that objection.
And I apologize, just for the record, is there any way to get the question read
Am I accurate that the practice of the town at the time, we were, was only, is that too far back?
I think that was too far back, but I think, I apologize, I don't want to start speaking if you're, I think I knew where I was. I think we had just established for the record that as of October 2021, what we will call for purposes of this hearing, the old ordinance was in effect, correct?
Correct.
Last night, you also testified about a November 12th, 2021 alternative site plan that was also submitted by HS Robin Hood that included a proposed lodge slash spa facility, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if I recall from your testimony, you told Mr. Day at CDC that the lodge and spa would require a conditional use permit subject to a quasi judicial hearing, correct?
Correct.
And so just to be clear for the record, out of the May, October, and November site plans, the November 2021 alternative site plan was the first time you told Mr. Day or anyone at HS Robin Hood owner that there was a conditional use requiring a quasi judicial hearing?
That's correct.
And then in response to your, in response to your statement that the lodge and spa facility would require a conditional use permit subject to a quasi judicial hearing, HS Robin Hood then submitted, withdrew that site, alternative site plan, and then submitted an alternative site plan on December 20th, 2021, correct?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, and we can turn to, let me find the right tab. It would be tab six, I believe in the record.
What would that be, number?
RD six.
Oh, yes, it is. It starts with RD 028.
Okay, thank you.
028.
We don't have tabs, ours.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Do you see that, Ms. Eisenhower?
Okay. And I was just asking that on December 20th, 2021, HS Robin Hood withdrew the alternative site plan and submitted a revised site plan, correct?
Correct.
And that site plan was submitted when the old ordinance was still in effect, correct?
Correct.
Can I ask you a question on that? Which site plan are you saying, the October 13th revision was?
He's talking about the December 20th site plan.
And I can kind of quickly summarize if that would help.
I want a timeline.
Yeah. And I could give you a quick timeline if that would help.
Draw this thing?
But on May 17th, the initial, May 17th, 2021, the initial application and site plan was submitted. That same day, Ms. Eisenhower provided questions to Chris Day at CDC. In response, he did the October 13th site plan. There were still questions about what was and what was not a conditional use. So an alternative site plan was submitted on November, I believe, November 13th, 2021. That included the lodge and spa facility. Ms. Eisenhower informed Mr. Day at CDC that that, that included, that would require a conditional use permit resulting in a quasi judicial hearing, which then led to the withdrawal of that and submission of a revised site plan on December 20th, 2021, that no longer included a lodge and spa facility.
Okay.
And I can ask that as, Ms. Eisenhower, was that a correct, correct, I guess, recollection of the timeline of events as you recall?
Yes, I recall.
And just for the, again, the board, lawyers aren't sworn in, they're not offering testimony. I'm not sure if that, that is accurate. I would suspect it is, but I'm not following it. Make sure that the evidence, as you recall it, comes from the witnesses who are sworn under oath and are testifying.
So to add another piece of clarification to that timeline, yesterday, we talked about the, the two different ordinance dates. So it was one that was October 23rd, 2018. That was the old one, right? That was in effect as of May 17th, when that was submitted. And then, and then we talked about on May 18th, and I said coincidentally is one day apart. And I wondered why the, so coincidentally was one day, but that was the day that there was a 160D compliance change to the ordinance or something that you talked about. Can you?
There was a change adopted on that date that was later voided by the town attorney in August. So that's, it disappeared.
So that, that change that, is that a separate version of the ordinance? Is that, was it in effect for, from the time from May 18th to August? Was it, is that the way the ordinance was then with that adjustment?
No.
Oh, okay.
It was, it was there for a time, but then the attorney voided and it was off the books like it never existed.
So it was there for a time. And I just wondered because that, that time is in this timeframe. So I just didn't know if it, is it relevant to the requirements?
No.
For this property? Okay. So it's that, the issue addressed in that adjustment on May 18th was something else completely, not related to zoning for Mountain Village properties?
The change was relevant to compliance with state law and the new ones, chapter 160D. So there were changes throughout the ordinance, some to the Mountain Village District. But the way it was voided makes it like it never existed.
Okay. So it may have been in effect, but then it was taken back.
Right.
On, on, okay. All right. Okay. That clarifies some of my confusion on, on those dates because I had a May 18th date and I'm not hearing it again. So there was something that went in right after this date that was effective all the way after, around the whole entire thing and then, and then removed again. So I just wondered.
So it's not like it was effective for four months and then it went away. It was struck from completely ever existing.
You were like expunged, basically?
Okay.
Jumping back now to the December 20th revised site plan, if you turn, I say tab seven and it's RD, it starts with RD 032 and goes to RD 036. Are those emails you had with Ms. Sean Sains at CDC?
Yes.
And Ms. Sains is a colleague of Mr. Day, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in this email chain, just quick way of summarizing it to try and get through it, you acknowledged receipt of that revised site plan and asked Ms. Sains if HS Robin Hood would want to be, have their site plan included on the January 10th agenda, correct?
Correct.
And then I believe Ms. Sains, if you turned to RD 035, responded and asked for you to please clarify what meeting you were referring to, correct?
Correct.
And then your response to her is on RD 034, where you, let's make sure it's up, I apologize, at the bottom of RD 034, where you say, Sean, removal of the lodge slash spa facility changes the approval. That would have required a special use permit in a quasi judicial hearing. While the amended proposed plan includes permitted uses in the Mountain Village District, my interpretation of the ordinance is all Mountain Village proposals go through the same process as subdivisions, correct?
Correct.
So in that email, you are saying that there are no conditional uses in the December 20th, 2021 revised plan, correct?
Correct.
But your opinion at that time was that it would still have to go through the same review process as a subdivision?
Correct.
Okay. And I asked that question because I think yesterday, Mr. Henning asked you about a letter that Mr. Swords sent on January 19th, which is tab eight and starts at RD 038. And that was the request, I believe, you talked about from Mr. Swords about what the proper review process was, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in response to that letter, you sent Mr. Swords an email, which is under tab 11 and starts at RD 051. And it says, Jesse, my determination regarding the master plan approval for the Mountain Village zoning district is that planning board review is required for approval. And then you attached a, a letter that I believe you also discussed with, yesterday with Mr. Henning from Towns Legal Counsel, Sam Craig, that's at RD 04 or 5, correct?
Correct.
I just want to confirm, based on your email, would you agree that your determination you made on February 11th was different from the advice or instructions that you gave Ms. Sains in December, on December 21st, 2021 about the review process?
Yes. I told Ms. Sains that it would be the same as a subdivision approval, so it would require planning board and town council review. And on February 11th, I amended that to just include planning board review and approval.
And under this determination on February 11th, that would have been a ministerial approval because there were no conditional uses. Is that correct?
Correct.
And did anyone appeal your determination that you made on February 11th about the review process for the application?
No.
Okay. And would you be aware if someone would have appealed that determination in your role as a planning director and zoning administrator?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Henning also talked to you about a Mountain Village checklist that is tab 12 in RD 053, is the cover page. It starts at RD 054. And I believe your testimony was that that was an internal checklist used by the town staff. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And then was it in February of 2022 when you advised Mr. Swords, who is legal counsel for HS Robin Hood Owner LLC, that HS Robin Hood should use that internal checklist to revise its site plan?
I don't remember if it was February or not, but I did, I did supply the checklist to Mr. Swords just for his benefit.
Okay. If you turn to RD 057, I believe, do you see those emails between you and Mr. Swords?
Mm-hmm.
And in that, I'm sorry.
I see them, yeah.
And in that email, Mr. Swords is referencing the, the check, master plan checklist, correct?
Yes.
Does that refresh your memory that it would have been in February of 2022 when you discussed that checklist with Mr. Swords?
It does. And I just provided it as a general guide for preparing the plan.
You turn to RD 061. It's tab 14. And, and at the bottom of that page, there is an email from Mr. Swords dated April 8th, 2022. Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. And if you turn to the next page, Mr. Swords says, I spoke with my client about the Robin Hood project. They are still waiting on detailed topo of the site. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And yesterday, I believe during your testimony, you had testified with Mr. Henning about a determination you made on July, initially in July, where you said that the application was no longer valid, but then you reconsidered facts and on July 20th issued a new determination where you found that the May 17th, 2021 zoning application remained valid, correct?
Correct.
Was, was this email on April 8th one of the emails that you, you reviewed to reconsider the position and reach the new determination by the town that the May 17th, 2021 zoning application remained valid?
I don't have the list of documents in front of me, but it's possible that this was one of those.
Can I just object to that question for the strength of the tortuous, not giving an answer to the question.
I believe she's able to testify whether she recalls or doesn't recall certain facts.
Her response was positive.
So do we want to accept that or do you want to strike that from the record?
What do you want to do?
I mean, she's on, she's on this email from April 8th, when, I mean.
We have no objection to the email.
Yeah, I think we strike the answer.
Okay. Yeah, let's sustain and we'll strike that last answer from the record. Correct?
Just to follow up then, John, I think you're getting a call.
Sorry.
To follow up, my understanding though, is you reviewed some additional information and came to the new determination on July 20th, 2021, that the May 17th, 2021 zoning application submitted by HS Robin Hood remained valid, correct?
That is correct.
And did you issue that July 20th, 2021 determination in your official capacity as a planning director and zoning administrator? And for reference, I'm sorry, I can, it is RD 079.
Yes, I did.
Mr. Portnoy, nice question.
Yes.
The date you mentioned, I think you were mentioning 2021, but we're talking about 2022 right now. I just want to confirm that we're on the same page.
So when I said 2021, I'm, I apologize, there's a lot of dates. May 17th, 2021, this letter is in reference to that zoning application. And this letter is 2022. So you are hearing both.
Okay.
Okay.
So based on the letter that's up, RD 079, would you agree that the town was bound to give HS Robin Hood until August 11th, 2022 to submit a revised site plan?
Yes.
Okay. And based on your determination, excuse me, that the May 17th, 2021 zoning application remained valid, you actually withdrew the property at issue in this case from a rezoning application. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And that's because the Town of Woodfin ordinance prohibits the town from rezoning any property that has a valid zoning application pending, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Did anyone appeal the July 20th, 2022 determination that you issued?
No.
Okay, and so that brings us, I guess, now to August 8th, tab 20.
RD.
RD, I'm sorry, RD 081. And is that, it goes, I believe, to RD 106, is that a revised site plan that was submitted by HS Robinhood on August 8th, 2022?
I'm sorry, what was the number?
I believe it's, starts at RD 081, and then there's a cover letter there, and then followed by.
Oh, okay.
It goes all the way through 106 for that tab.
Yes, there is a revised site plan.
And that was submitted before the August 11th, 2022 date in your letter, correct?
I'm having a hard time finding, I see the site plan, but I don't see.
RD 081, if you turn to that. Do you see the cover letter with the August 8th, 2022?
Okay, yes, that's correct.
Based on your review of the August 8th, 2022 revised site plan, did you identify any conditional uses requiring a quasi judicial hearing?
No.
I'd like to ask a question, please.
Are these ever scanned received on a certain date?
I did not do that.
Okay, and after you received that revised site plan, do you recall informing HS Robinhood that the zoning application and site plan would be on the October 4th, 2022 agenda for ministerial review to the Planning Board?
Do you have a, is it in the record?
I don't have an email, I was just asking if you recalled sending Mr. Swords, or reaching out to Mr. Swords to let him know?
That was about the time I was starting to transition, so I don't know, I can't honestly say that I sent the email or someone else did.
Just a few more questions for you right now. I'm going to hand to you what's going to be premarked as Exhibit 3.
You can hand the official ones to Brian, that'd be.
Yeah, I've got the other copies.
The court's copies, he was keeping a stack of them.
Oh, yeah, no worries.
I do not think. Adrian, you did not get a copy of that, right?
No, let me give one to. You're going to get her authenticated before I hand this up to the board.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
I painted you what has been premarked as Exhibit 3, do you recognize this as an email exchange between?
I would object, to authenticate something, you ask the witness if they recognize it, and they have to describe what it is, if this is going to be an evidence, not to be presented as an asset of recognition. This is an improper foundation of proof, indicating that this is a counterintention.
Ms. Eisenhower, do you recognize this email?
Sustained.
I do. It's an email between me and Jessica Bernstein.
At this time, I'd like to move to have this admitted into the record.
Pending approval, do we have any objections to admitting this letter? Okay.
No objections.
Okay, this can be admitted to as evidence, number three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have a two?
Yeah, it wasn't, it was a two yesterday.
There's, there's the one.
All right, Ms. Eisenhower, if you could turn to, it would be the second to last page. And I just want to clarify, you said this was an email between you and Jessica Bernstein, is that Ms. Bernstein that's sitting at the table with Mr. Noor?
It is.
Okay, and the, towards the bottom of the second to last page, can you tell the board what Ms. Bernstein is asking for in that email?
On February 22nd?
Yes, at 9:48 a.m.
Hi there, I spoke, wait, hi there, I spoke with Adrian yesterday, and she mentioned she was going to email me something during our conversation, but I haven't received it, so I wanted to make sure she has my email address.
Okay. And then you responded, and you attached a document to that, and it looks like then she followed up with another question, correct? Can you read what Ms. Bernstein's follow-up question at 10:29 a.m. was?
Thanks, also, you were going to send me the wording and the MV ordinance that this project is subject to, rather than the version that is currently on Unicode.
Okay, and this email is dated February 22nd, 2022, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and is it accurate to say that Ms. Bernstein is asking you for a copy of the old version of the ordinance, because that was no longer on Unicode as of that date?
Object, so what was on Ms. Bernstein's mind was she was asking, the document speaks for itself, was all of this question?
Sustained.
Yeah, I know, yeah, what, what was your understanding of Ms. Bernstein's question to you in the 10:29 a.m. email?
Object, is speculation is what's going on with Ms. Bernstein's mind, the document speaks for itself, so that's what she asked for.
It goes to what her response is in the email as to what her understanding when she receives an email, how she's understanding it.
Her response.
Okay, sustained, can you rephrase the question?
Ms. Eisenhower, in the response to this email, did you send Ms. Bernstein a copy of what we are calling the old version of the ordinance?
I did.
Can I ask a question, so on that, that email where you say, hi Jessica, see attached, please let me know if you have questions, that's the one on February 22nd at 9:58 a.m., do we have that attachment, or do we, from the email?
I probably do.
I think that would be relevant, if we're talking about deciding what it is, or whether it's old or new, or, you know, we could see what was actually attached. Question I had, I don't know if we can.
Do you have your computer here today?
Back there.
Would you have access to that email on the computer?
I can see, I mean, I'd have to look at my computer and do some digging.
Would, would that be a?
Yeah, we could do that later, that, I, I'd be interested to see which version of it, because it seems like everyone's kind of poking at which version is floating around and what was subject to what, so.
So are you okay? So we're going to plan on taking a break around seven o'clock-ish tonight, or, yeah, around seven o'clock is tonight, wherever it fits good, are you okay till then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so you didn't.
I think it was the board member.
Okay, just a question, it wasn't objection, okay.
Yeah, it's just a question to the witness while she's up there, since we're talking about that email.
Adrian, I feel like we're not seeing the whole thing, since it's an attachment.
I just want to clarify, as of February 22nd, 2022, would the, what we call the new version of the ordinance, was that the version that was available on Unicode?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I believe that's all I have for now, and we can obviously address the issue as to what was attached to the email during the break.
Yeah, when she finds it, we'll just reserve her, your right to call her back up.
Okay, perfect.
Let's see, who is next, is there a special order for asking questions?
I think Mr. Noor is, yes.
Mr. Noor?
Good evening, Ms. Eisenhower, oh, sorry, go ahead, do you need, you've got water? Okay, I know, after you get to talking a little while. Make sure everyone has size one, two. Ready? Okay. So, just to sort of set the table on the questions that I'm going to ask you, a number of the questions that you were asked about which version of the code applied, how the plan came in, et cetera, those are, those are the positions you took, that's what's in dispute in this appeal, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that was your position, Ms. Bernstein's position, and the position of the appeal is different than that, you understand that? So I'd.
Yes.
And for Madam reporter's benefit, if we, yes or no, and no nodding, and I know it gets difficult to do it, I do it myself as well. So I want to walk you back through the documents, memory is a funny thing, when we think about a year and a half ago, what can we all recall versus what did we put in writing? And so looking at that.
Mr. Noor, which document are you talking about?
I'm about to throw it up, and it's going to be RD 8 and 9, it's going to be where we start. So, I want to talk a little bit about the testimony you just gave. You were asked a question about whether, and this is RD 8, this is in the record, this is your email from May 17th, 2021, to Sean Sains and Chris Day, correct?
Correct.
And I think the testimony that you gave was that when you received that May 2021 application, you considered it complete.
Correct.
So what I'd like to point out for you here is, right here, okay, and tell me if I read this incorrectly, we looked over the site plan, and we have a few follow-up questions requiring additional information, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So your testimony was it was complete, however, you sent an email on May 17th to the engineers saying you required additional information?
Yes.
Okay, so it wasn't complete, it required some additional information, and you then spelled out the six categories of additional information you wanted from the developer, correct?
I think the application itself was complete, there was additional information required on the site plan itself.
So let's talk, and again, you don't, where in this email, and feel free to look through it, where do you say that the application is complete?
Well, I don't.
Okay, so you didn't say it was complete, you said it required additional information, and then you listed the additional information that was needed, correct?
Yes.
And, and I'm throwing up RD 9, this is category four of additional information you requested from the developer, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and here it says, correct me if I read it wrong, do you have a landscaping plan, question marks, question mark, the ordinance requirements are as follows, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Then you list off, landscaping and or buffering shall be provided as part of an approved master plan, such plan will be designed by a licensed state landscape architect and must be approved as part of the master plan, did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So, of the additional information that you requested, a portion of it was required by the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you, I, this quote is from the ordinance that you provided to the developer.
Correct.
So you told them, we need a landscape plan, and it has to be a plan that's prepared by a licensed landscape architect, that's additional information that I need as part of this application, correct? Where, one of the things that I'd like to go to next, is the October 13th application that was submitted, and I'd like to walk through that in a couple different ways. If you'll give me just a second. I believe your testimony to Mr. Henning yesterday, when he asked you about this submission, and this is RD 15, in your binder, your testimony, and I wrote it down, was that this did not constitute a landscape.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So as of the October 2021 application, we still don't have a landscape plan, correct?
Correct.
So you asked for it in May, you put it in the email, the submission here in October, the October 2021 application comes in, it still doesn't include a landscape plan, correct?
Correct.
And I'll sort of head in a different direction at this point, I want to go back to.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
When you were in your role at that time, was it some, at what point did you, or did you ever tell folks submitting a plan, the plan is now complete, was there some document or some? How would, how would the applicant know it was a complete?
We did not have a separate document for plant, whether or not the plan was complete. The plan would be approved via zoning permit, but whether or not it was complete was, we didn't have a document for that.
Was there any way that the applicant would know specifically, typically, that their plan was deemed complete?
The zoning permit would be the only tangible document.
I'd like to follow up on Board Member Hanson's question, he was asking about how would someone know if it was complete or not. Well, in this case, we know that it wasn't, because you were requesting additional information that was required by the ordinance, weren't you?
Yes.
So regardless of whether you, that was your practice or not, we know in this case, ordinance required information was missing from the application, correct?
Missing from the site plan.
Yes.
And can I ask a question, then, that information that is required with the application is all to then go to, in order to get you on the schedule for the Planning Board, right? Once, once you have the application to your satisfaction, that you feel is complete with the items you want, wanting them to respond with, then you would schedule them for, you know, 30 days, however, however, however far in advance it is, but whichever Planning Board meeting comes up.
Correct.
Okay, so, so that's the next step in the process, sort of, this complete application in order to bring it before the board for approval.
Yes.
And, oh, go ahead, sir.
And you made a distinction between application and plan, can you say more about that?
There's two separate documents, and the application had been submitted and was complete, and what information was asked for on that application, the site plan was submitted with the application, there was more information requested for the site plan.
And for an application to be complete, the site plan can have additional questions?
Yes, yes.
For how long a period of time, until it goes to the board?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Question for you, where in the ordinance does it say that the site? Question for you. Where in the ordinance does it say that the site plan can continue to be supplemented over time, separate and apart from the application?
I don't know that the ordinance says that.
So the ordinance, which is what you're required to follow in this situation, correct?
Yes.
Again, I'm going to object to a legal conclusion on that question.
I think her testimony earlier was that she's required to use the ordinance and apply it in her work, and I asked her whether she had to use it or not as part of her job. I don't think that's a legal conclusion. It's, did you have to use it or not? She answered yes.
This is similar to his objection previously about her not being determined.
I'm not asking her to decide whether that was the right code or the wrong code. I'm asking, did she use it or not, and was she required to use it?
Overruled, and let's hear that answer then.
I believe he answered yes, Ms. Eisenhower.
I believe, yes.
Sorry.
So-
Good work, Mike.
Regardless of what the customer practice may have been, ordinance didn't provide for that. And I'd like to go back to, a little bit, back in time, back to May 18th, okay? So, again, just sort of set the table, May application comes in, request for additional information comes out, response from the developer, May 18th. I'm showing you what is marked as RD eight. You, can you see that email there?
Yes.
Ms. Eisenhower, is this from Chris Day, the developer's civil designer, to you in response to your request for additional information?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe it says, "We are working on a few details to respond to your comments," and then it says, "Please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back with you." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So, 17th, you asked for additional information. 18th, developer says, asks you not to put this application on an agenda until they get back with you, correct?
Correct.
So, when did you receive an email from the developer before, well, I'll take that back, and we'll work through a couple of things before I ask that?
Let me ask one more question. Master plan is the same thing as the site plan? As referenced in RD 009, number four, what is-
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna put up, and this is a statute, this is 143-755. I'm going to read from it, correct me if I read it wrong. It says, "If a permit application is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six consecutive months or more, or, key or, the applicant fails to respond to comments or provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government for a period of six consecutive months or more, the application review is discontinued, and the development regulations in effect at the time, at the time permit processing is resumed, apply to the application." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so based on the testimony we've just heard from you, we have both a situation where you requested additional information, correct?
Yes.
And we have a situation on the 18th where they've asked for their application not to be placed on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Going forward, and I want to look at that October 13th. This is pretty important. So this is RD 17. Is this the email that provided the October 2021 application?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm quoting from it. It says, "Please see attached zoning resubmital with a revised site plan of the Robin Hood Residential Project. This resubmital is in response to our initial submittal from May 17th." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Is there anything in that email that says amendment?
No.
As part of that email, did it include a letter from Chris Day? This is RD 12.
Yes.
You can read from it, let me know if I read that incorrectly. "Please confirm that the materials we have submitted are sufficient to constitute an application under the Town of Woodfin zoning ordinance in effect as of the date of your receipt of this letter, and that there are no fees, et cetera." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Is there anywhere in that letter that indicates it's an amendment?
No.
And it requests that the effective date of the ordinance be as of October 13th, 2021, not May 17th, 2021, correct?
Correct.
Now, sort of, fast-forwarding in time, well, we just talked about how there was a request for additional information on May 17th, and that was one of those issues with the landscaping plan, correct?
Yes.
We just talked about how the landscaping plan by a licensed landscape architect was not provided in the October application, correct?
Yes.
And we talked about how there was a request to hold the May submittal on May 18th, correct?
Yes.
Where in the record is there a landscaping plan by a licensed architect between May 17th, 2021, and six months after that, which would be November 17th, 2021?
I don't believe there is a landscape plan by a licensed architect in the record.
So within six months of you requesting the information, the landscaping plan by a licensed architect, none was provided to you?
Correct.
Where in the record of decision is there an email or other communication from Mr. Day asking that that application be taken off hold and put back on an agenda between May 18th, 2021, and November 18th, 2021?
There is not one.
Okay. Six-month period passes as well. Correct? Between May 18th and November 18th, no request to take it off the hold, correct?
There was this resubmital on November 12th.
Well, I'm referring to his request to take off, to put it on hold between that time period and November 18th, 2021. Where did he request to put it back on?
He didn't.
May. I'd like to put up, here we go. This is from, this is the October email, excuse me, December 20th email, I believe, this is RD 36. Ms. Eisenhower, can you see that?
Yes.
And this is from, I believe it's from Sean again, correct?
Yes.
To you, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this is providing the December 20th letter, correct?
Correct.
And in that, they withdraw the November alternative application, and then they also provide some additional plans, correct?
Correct.
And I'm going to read from this, just let me know if I read it wrong. "Please see attached submittal, updated materials of our original October 13th submittal for the proposed Robin Hood Residential Project." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So Sean's indicating here, their original application they're dealing with here is their October 13th application, correct?
Correct.
Not talking about May, are they?
No.
Just give me one second. There we go. Included in that email was a letter from Chris Day as well, correct?
Yes.
In that letter, and if I'm reading here in the second to last, or the last paragraph before the thank you, it says, "We have updated our original October 13th submittal with general note two." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So not only does the email reference the October application, so does the letter contained therein, they're talking about the October application. Correct?
Correct.
Not the May application, correct?
Correct.
And that would make sense considering they submitted the application in May. Six months had passed, they submitted other applications, and they had not still provided you with a landscaping plan as you had requested, correct?
I'm going to object to that question. There is not a six-month period between May and October 2021.
I think the witnesses, that wasn't my question, but the witness's testimony is she received no landscaping plan for over six months. This was previous testimony.
It's, I'm following this timeline thing, so the, the May application, his point is that six months from the May is November. That application never had a site, a landscape plan
The original.
Given to it. The October one, which is a totally separate application now, has nothing to do with the six months of November. So I don't, I don't know what your objection was.
He just mentioned that May, and then six months past October. I was just clarifying for the record that there is not a six-month period between May and October.
Okay, okay, so maybe this both-
I agree, there's not six months between the May and October.
Say, sustain, and we agree that there was only five months in that calculation.
Okay.
So, and, and for the board's reference, again, the issue, the application that is on appeal is the May 17th application. That is what the developer claims to be relying on. Ms. Eisenhower. One, a few more questions, I'll leave it.
Glad you're doing this.
I know, I know, I'm thanking him.
One of the questions, I think, or several questions that you received, or that you had earlier, was about, asked you about, were there any conditional uses? Correct?
Correct.
And during, whether it was the May or the October, or were there any conditions? And your response was, no, there were not.
Correct.
Like to, this is from the, what was called the old version of the ordinance, the, the version, if everyone's following along. It's the definition of group development. So first, group development is in the old ordinance, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so from the moment they submitted the very first application, there was group development regulation within the Town of Woodfin, correct?
Correct.
And this definition says, it means a group of two or more principal structures built upon a single lot tract or parcel of land, not subdivided into customary streets and lots, and which will not be subdivided and designed for occupancy by separate families, businesses, or other enterprises. Examples would be, and then it goes through, but two of the ones that are provided are apartment courts and housing projects. Did I read that correct?
Correct.
So, looking back, yes.
Question, a line of questions, I guess, for you, Ms. Eisenhower. Eisenhower, what is a principal structure? What's the definition of that?
I can throw that up for you if you'd like.
Yes, please.
What, it's defined in the ordinance?
I believe it is, yeah. So if you'll just give me a second, I'm happy to put that up there for you.
Yeah, I know.
When you, if you're citing things from the ordinance, can you reference the page number?
Is it structure that's defined?
No, I know, but we have, we have, they're in our Dropbox.
Structures, I can pop that up there. But I see that on 5411, I'll just put it up there so we can all see.
So we're looking for the definition of?
So, structure.
A structure.
Right.
Well, I'm going to object, structure is different than principal structure, and so they ask for principal structure, those are very key differences.
Well, that's, I agree. My initial question is, what is a principal structure?
So, let me ask a couple of follow-ups on that. So we do have structure in the definition, correct, Ms. Eisenhower?
If I can, if I can just interrupt and hold on for Madam Court reporter, did you, did you want your question answered from Ms. Eisenhower, or do you want Mr. Nor to continue with his line of questioning?
I'd like my question answered. And, and if, if you don't know the definition by ordinance, what's your understanding of what principal structure means? How did you?
A principal structure is the main use of the lot, the main use on a property, the main, so it'd be, may not, principal structure, well, I'm going to get into the weeds. It may have subordinate uses on the same property, but the principal structure is like a house, or an apartment building, or
A shop.
The main use of the property.
So it would be the house, would it be, what is, what would be, there may be other structures attached to the principal structure, would they also be principal structures? Are there, how do we, where does a principal structure begin and end?
That's a loaded question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we don't have a clear definition in the ordinance, so it's based on interpretation of what's being presented as the principal structure. So, I don't know that I'm going to answer your question definitively.
All right.
Maybe you can ask a couple of follow-ups that'll help illuminate that. I think what I was hearing you say, Ms. Eisenhower, is that the principal structure, we look at the principal structure versus an accessory structure, or something like that. And I'll just use an example. Principal structure could be a single-family home, correct?
Correct.
Accessory structure could be the garage out back, correct?
Correct.
So that's sort of a common used one, but your principal structures, as you were saying, deal with the use. So if you had a subdivision of single-family residences, the principal structures are the homes that are throughout that subdivision, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if you had an apartment complex, it might be multiple apartment buildings throughout the development, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there additional definitions of principal structure? Is there more than one definition of principal structure?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not necessarily this interpretation?
Right.
Okay.
When there's an undefined term in your ordinance, you are required to interpret the code as best you can, correct? And you can also consult other sources, correct?
Correct.
Okay, are you aware of other planning sources that define some of these terms?
Yeah, there's a planner's dictionary.
Have you used that in the past?
Yes.
Okay, is that a commonly-used dictionary within the field to define terms like this?
Yes.
Okay. If I may, I can pull up, I think that dictionary has a definition of principal structure, if you'll just give me a second to try and find it.
Yeah, and I'm just going to object, we don't have a copy of that, we don't know what he's pulling from the code we're finding, because the code's in the record, but-
I can ask Ms. Adrian, Ms. Eisenhower, if she can identify the document, the dictionary, and if she can identify it, then that's-
Sustained, I'm sorry, overruled.
Give me one second here.
While you're doing that, can I ask you, Scott, why do you want to know this? What, what, how does this relate to what we're, you know, what she's presenting? Is that, I can't do that?
Right, because I don't think he's been sworn and under oath and-
Oh, oh, okay.
If you've got questions of Ms., if you've got questions of Ms. Eisenhower, you can ask her.
I was just curious as to, you know, where you were gonna, where you were going with this, but that's okay, I got you. I'm always asking the wrong person.
So Ms. Eisenhower, do you recognize this document that I've thrown up here?
Yes, the cover of the planner's dictionary.
And you've used this before on a regular basis, correct?
Yes.
I, I think you, the town might even have a copy of it here?
Yes.
Okay, so used in your office, correct?
Yes.
So can I ask a question? Mr. Horton, since you did have an objection, are you okay, satisfied with her, this being shown?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're all good. Thank you.
And. I'm just trying to find it here.
Hmm, okay, structure, principle.
Kind of what you just said, a structure in which is conducted the principal use of the lot on which it's located.
Right.
The main building on a parcel of land. So if, again, back to the analogy that we were using earlier, if a single-family residential development, it would be the single-family homes. However many of them are the principal structures, you count them up in determining whether we're dealing with a group development, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So one of the things I'd like to go back to is the first submittal here. And again, you're, I'll back up. We talked about group development. We have the definition, I can pull that back up if the board would like to see. Group developments were conditional uses under the code at the time, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
No.
That is now what's listed in this, in the code we have in the record under the ordinance, old version of the ordinance.
I'm happy to bring up the version of the code so we can see it, so we don't even have to speculate about it.
Okay, overruled, let's see that version now. And we're saying this is the version. If you wanna see it and pull it up, are you sustaining his objection or overrueling? I'm sorry, we're sustaining the objection because we wanna see the.
I'll, I'll just bring it up.
Yeah, my mistake. Thank you.
Oh, yah, yah.
And can we clarify that this is the one that was in effect at the time of the initial application?
Yes.
The, correct.
Group development cited, excuse me, from section 54, 318, group development as a conditional use. Did I read that correctly, Ms. Eisenhower?
Yes.
Okay.
And I wanted to clarify my objection. My understanding from the way he phrased the question was that group development was listed as a conditional use in the mountain village portion of the ordinance, which it is not. I do understand that it is a general term within, within that ordinance, but it is not within the mountain village ordinance.
I think this is a speaking objection, and that's, those aren't really allowed. They can object to the question. I never said mountain village, so I don't really understand the relevancy of this.
I was, I was just trying to explain the basis of my objection, so.
Okay.
Just as he asked you.
Okay, thank you.
So conditional use under the code at the time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so. Looking at that submittal, and I should say the, the app, the application there. This is the May 17th application. How many, this was single, I won't say single family, but this is residential purposes, correct?
Correct.
How many of those structures can you count there?
Jeez.
More than, let's put it this, oh, that's an unfair question. I mean, I mean, I take that back, a small, I, I, we're talking about more than two, correct?
Correct.
More than three, correct? Could be dozens up there, correct?
Correct.
So, under the ordinance at the time, this would have been defined as a group development, wouldn't it?
In my review of the Mountain Village District standards at the time, I was trying to, that's one of the reasons I was trying to gather more information on what the development consisted of, so I could determine whether it was a permanent use in the Mountain Village District as they were listed. At the time, it included things like cottage clusters and other types of residential developments.
But as of the information they provided you, it meets the definition of group development, does it not?
There are two or more structures on a single lot.
Not subdivided for separate use meets the rest of the requirements of the definition, correct?
Correct.
So, right out of the gate, you've got a group development. And your testimony had been that there weren't any conditional uses with the first application, correct?
Correct.
However, when we look at it, we see that there was a group development by definition, which was a conditional use, as just highlighted in the section I threw up on the screen, correct?
Correct.
And I'm, I think I'm getting close to being done, so I'm just going back a minute, so you'll just give me a second. Please. Okay. Just a few more, and I apologize. I believe you were asked, and this is RD 68. Zoom in further, but this is the determination you provided on, I believe, July 8th, 2022, correct?
Correct.
And I'm just gonna highlight a portion of this. In the second paragraph here, we have, according to NCGS 143755B1, a development application review is discontinued if placed on hold by the applicant for a period of six consecutive months or more. Your original development application was received on May 17th, and the following several, and following several revisions was put on hold on January 6th, 2022. Did I read that correct?
Yes.
So your determination relates to a hold that you thought believed on, began on January 6th, 2022, correct?
Correct.
At the request of the applicant. This request necessitated delay of delaying the scheduling of required planning board hearing. The town sought to advance the application and reschedule the required planning board hearing in March, and then again in May of this year, and was asked on both occasions to hold off scheduling the hearing. As a result, current application referenced above is no longer in effect. Essentially, from January 6th, 2022 through July 6th, 2022, that was the six months you were referring to, correct?
Correct.
You were not talking about any period of time before January 6th in your letter, were you?
I don't think so. No.
Okay. So your determination is limited to the time period of January 6th to July 6th, 2022, correct?
Correct.
Looking forward to the, the August 22, 2022 submittal. That, that came in after you rescinded this determination, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we go to August, new plan comes in, correct?
Correct.
August 2022, I wanna be specific, I apologize. Correct?
Yes.
And after that, a request for zoning determination comes in from the developer. And I, and that's not, I think that was the time you were transitioning out. So I will, I will save that because I think Ms. Tuck is gonna be testifying as well, and I will withdraw that question. If I can have just a moment to talk with my client and make sure that there's no other questions she would like me to ask. I think I'm just about done. Those will be my questions for this time. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Eisenhower.
Thank you. The board can ask any questions. There may be some redirect or recross from the other parties, but if the board has any questions now, might be a good time to ask Ms. Eisenhower.
Anyone on the board? Scott?
I have a question. So when, when, in that letter that we were just talking about, where you were saying that that was now expired on July 6th, and you specifically say the, it was the application that was received on May 17th, were you treating the May 17th application and then the October new submittal as two separate things then?
No.
Okay, so, so they weren't really, it wasn't seen as a separate thing at that point?
Right.
I just didn't know if, if that was specifically referring to that version of it. But this was the May 17th one that was, that was put on hold on January 6th?
Right.
Okay.
Good. Do we have any redirects questions?
Just give him a wheel if I can just have a moment, please.
Nope, take it down.
I'll just throw it out that if the board wanted to break now versus seven, now might, you know, logic of the time to do that since we're heading back into the second question, but obviously to the board.
Do we wanna finish this witness first? Okay, let's, let's.
I apologize, I was just going to comment. Would that provide an opportunity for her to also look through her email? And then she'd still be on the stand that way?
Do you?
Different y'all, but we do have the open email question.
Okay. All right, then let's take a 15-minute break. So at a six, well, we will resume at 6:40.
And the mics are live.
Yes. Oh, thank you.
What's your birth sign? What's your birthday?
It's in August, August 7th. It's probably a Leo.
You're a Leo.
I think.
You're, you're a happy, you're, you got a lot. You're a fire sign, a fire sign.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that's great.
I don't even wanna go anywhere.
Frank, did he give a time of birth coming out?
Yeah, he did.
6:40.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Did you not bring anything?
So you guys always wanna be attorneys.
Sure, sure. When I was looking at college, I was looking to be an apartment.
No kidding.
Outdoors.
You wanted to be outdoors.
Oh, I still, I still.
You love the outdoors.
I did environmental law, land use law, property.
Okay, so you, you melded the two together.
I went to environmental in college, and I actually went to tour at Warren Wilson.
Oh, yeah.
They had a, an entrepreneurship program.
Interesting. And then?
Went to U of D Asheville instead.
Somehow.
Always loved politics.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My dad always thought I was, I was always arguing with the school. And when I was young, I wouldn't always remember what I had promised.
Yeah.
And so he started having me write it down, cram it, sign it up.
No.
He has these, and he says, these are our first contracts.
Right.
And that was business owners, so he's like, well, what's that say?
Oh, gee.
And, and, and I would basically go back and forth on what it said versus maybe what it meant, and.
That's great practice for you. Wow, wow. Amazing. Do you do that with your kids?
See, it's like, we're, we're still, we're gonna be writing, so we're not there yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're not there yet.
They're still young, yeah. That's cute. And what about you? When did you wanna be an attorney?
Environmental, I took an environmental law class at U N C A.
Okay.
In my, in, in, in environmental science degree.
Wow.
And I enjoyed, one, two of those classes mentally, and both of those professors said, if you like these classes, go to law school.
Okay.
So I did, I still didn't wanna be a lawyer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But.
But it just developed. That's what happens with careers, you know? I know that I didn't, I did stuff for so many years. I, I have a PhD from Penn State, and I got it when I was 52 years old.
Oh, good for you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, uh, communication. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. And I teach, I, I taught for, I was a college professor for years in Pennsylvania. And now I'm, I'm an adjunct at A V Tech. You can't get away from the classroom, you know?
I, I, you know, I, I teach, I teach a lot of classes at the Asheville.
Right?
And that is probably the most fun work I do.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Sure.
I, I, it's been a lot of thinking about it, if I could.
Teach.
You have to remember that.
Teach, yeah.
It will have an effect on somebody. College students.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It gets messy. Exactly, kind of positions, and I should think, and it's like, why?
Yeah.
Where does it say that? And all this, you're just blowing people's minds.
There's, there's nothing, there's nothing like it.
I don't care what you feel, I care what it says. What does it say?
There's, there's nothing like teaching. There's nothing like it. And again, I, I, for 30 years or more, I never thought about teaching. I never thought, but yet, I always realized that I was always in a position to try to teach people. You know, I was always showing them how to do something, or I was in customer service for years. I was a real estate broker, man. You know, I mean, when I think back on all the things that I did, and, you know, but it just kinda led to this point. You know, and that's why I'm asking you about, you know, how you got into law. You never know. And like my students now, I tell them all the time, this is not the last thing you're ever gonna do. You, you're, you don't know where you're gonna end up.
I think I first really liked teaching, but I was camp, I was camp counselor.
Oh, there you go.
And I loved that because I could lead mom and dad once I was still.
Oh, right, right.
Ten.
Sure.
You know, just like total freedom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What were you doing? Teaching, well, I was scout camp, so you might be nuts who you're teaching.
Yeah, right.
Teaching ten or.
Fun, fun stuff.
Whatever, but you're still, you're teaching.
Yeah, yeah.
Still about that a while too, through the Asheville, who knows.
Yeah, yeah.
Not with the kids so much now, that's what, because those are all late-night classes.
Yeah. Well, you'll see, you know.
Well, I mean, I think often, like between this and, this is also bringing that too, is that?
Yeah.
How could I, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Liver, liver room.
Most kids don't, most students don't like the one-night, three- or four-hour class.
No, no, it's very difficult, no. I, I taught, I taught, I teach mini-masters. I teach every eight weeks, because, forget about 16 weeks, we're the dragon of that. You know, I mean, especially public speaking. You know, that's what I teach now, only public speaking. And, you know, it's, it's over with. You get it done right away. I get them up and talking immediately. The first, the first several classes, they're up all the time, so they get used to it, yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, but I was curious what you teach and where you teach, what do you recommend?
Um, I was a college professor. I'm a retired college professor from, in Pennsylvania. I, I got my degrees at, my graduate degrees at Penn State. And then I taught at one of the state schools at Lock Haven University. And, and now I teach as an adjunct at A V Tech. Public speaking. Oh, yeah, I love it, I love it. Oh, you guys are doing a great job too, I have to say. Seriously, you know, I mean, 'cause you're used to it, you know, you get up. But still, there are people who do it all the time and are not happy about it. But still, there are people who do it all the time and are not happy about it, you know? They're still uncomfortable. Yeah.
Teachers.
Teachers.
High school, they do the high school.
However, I can tell you that I have students who talk about their teachers, and they'll tell me that some teachers that are just awful. And you know why? Because they don't speak to the audience. Because they rely on what's on a screen or something, you know? And I, when I let, when I have students do speeches, I don't let them use PowerPoint. They can't...
Good for you.
Oh, oh, please. There's a difference. There's a difference between giving a speech and doing a PowerPoint presentation. You know, I mean, that's, that's necessary, and you do that. But I, I tell them, "I can read, you don't have to read it to me." You know, that's what happens. You wind up reading the screen, you know, and it's ridiculous. But, but I, I just love it.
You gotta run to the...
Yeah, 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 go. I, I just love communicating. I, you know, I just, you know, it's, and today I'm, it's the beginning of the mini-master, and we're talking about establishing rapport, okay? And that's what you guys do all the time, and you kind of have to do. You know, and again, it's not about, "I have something to say and you're my audience." It's more like, "We're in this together," you know, "and we have to, I have to, you have to know that I care about you, and you have to know that, and I have to know that, that you're there for me."
Yeah.
Yeah, that kind of thing. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's, it's great fun. I love it. But who knows? I never thought I would ever do this, you know, ever, in a million years, never thought I would do it. You got food out there? I'm gonna go see.
They do.
I, I don't really need food, but I'll, I'll, I'll check it out.
No! Please, ask, ask any questions at one, because you have to.
These are facts.
I love you, Julie.
Thank you.
I saw your death certificate. It's just the circle that had a little tattoo, so I had to change my hair. It was, wow, look around.
I just thought we should say something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I heard I had that, and I thought, I, 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 I don't work for them. Oh, guys, I don't, oh, I don't, so I don't think I would.
You like to be able to have to bear an occasion to go.
Julie, we had a lovely person here yesterday as well. But she didn't do the thing with the math.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she did the typing.
Really, yeah. That's, we're working on that.
Yeah.
Different.
That's interesting. Well, she said something like it's phasing out.
This, I think this is phasing out.
Oh, really? And the typing is still? So many professions are changing because of technology. You know, you really just don't.
Oh, we don't?
Yeah.
Right, and that's what I'm hoping it'll be easier on you. Please, you're welcome. You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks Ricky, I apologize. That was the attachment, yeah. Everybody's cool with that coming in as an attachment or market as such. We're, oh yeah, we're good to go. They'll bring you the, they'll bring you the attachment back.
Okay, so can we resume? Is the board ready?
Yep.
Nope, no, where's the missing one? Chris just wanted to get a word in. Okay. There's a bunch on the floor too.
You can call it to order, we have a quorum so we can do it. He'll be back if you just want to take any testimony.
Okay. Call the meeting back to order?
John, before you ask, we're just missing one board member.
Yeah, I understand.
Besides how you show under of?
Yes.
Whenever you're ready, Ms. Hennig.
Thank you, sir.
We have, quiet please.
I'm going to direct your attention to a section in what we're calling the old ordinance. It's section fifty-four dash thirty-five. Actually, where are you going with page numbers? I need the section number. Did you, which section did you say? Fifty-four dash thirty-five. So, in your duties as the planning director, when you occupied that position, were you familiar with this section of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Let me just have you read for the benefit of the board members the first sentence there.
No building, sign, or other structure shall be erected, moved, added to, or structurally altered until an application for a zoning compliance permit is approved by the zoning administrator and a zoning compliance permit is issued.
So this indicates that a compliance permit is what's required before a building can start. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, would you characterize that as, we're in the process of your review. Does that happen at the front end of review of a plan that's been submitted?
No, it does not usually happen towards the end.
Very last thing, before building is permitted, as it reads? Did you ever receive any applications that had everything in them that was required to have a zoning compliance permit issued on the first submission?
Very seldomly.
Can you characterize what kind of projects could have had a complete, ready-for-zoning-compliance-permit submission on day one?
Um, not very many, very simple projects, like a deck maybe. But, other than that, not very many.
Anything with more substantial than a deck then?
Right.
And so, in order to get from the initial submission to a zoning compliance permit, what was the process?
I would review the permit, or the application, and the site plan submitted with the application, and compare it to the standards of the ordinance to determine if anything was missing, let the applicant know what additional information was needed, gather that information, process what was submitted, and approve the permit.
And to have that back and forth, where you asked for further submission, further documentation of the application, were you relying on any particular provision in the code that said you could do that?
Can you restate the question?
Were you aware of any provision in this code that tells you whether you can or can't have further clarification of a submission?
I am not aware of any provision that says I can or cannot.
Your practice was to clarify what the project was and to ask for further clarification and further documentation from the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
Would you say that, was that, and you said that that was common to submissions that you received?
Correct.
Were you aware of any section of this zoning ordinance that requires you to declare a, an application complete?
No.
Were you ever in the practice of declaring them complete?
No.
Were you ever advised not to declare them complete?
No.
No, you weren't advised. Were you ever advised that you could declare them complete, or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So when would you declare them complete?
I don't, I'm not sure I'm following the question.
I withdraw it. But it wasn't your practice to declare things complete?
Correct.
I believe your testimony earlier to Mr. Hanson's question was, what evidence completion for an applicant?
Right.
What was your answer?
There, there's not a tangible document that names an application complete.
Until?
Until the zoning permit.
And that's the one referred to in this section?
Yes.
Fifty-four dash thirty-five, okay. So, your testimony yesterday, I believe, was that you asked questions by email, the May seventeenth email, and I can direct you to, direct you to that. That begins at the bottom of RD zero-zero-eight, under tab two. So again, this is the email that you sent back to CDC, the engineer?
Correct.
Again, your testimony is there's nothing unusual about a back and forth with an applicant to clarify their application?
Correct.
Is there anything unusual about a landscape plan by not being certified on an initial submission as you received here?
No, there's nothing unusual about that at all.
So you weren't routinely declaring applications to be incomplete, insufficient, not submitted, if they didn't have a landscape plan like this?
Correct.
Can I ask you a question? Could you go in front of the planning board for approval without these items? Without the?
You could go in front of the planning board without them with the condition that they be submitted prior to the permit being issued.
Okay. And so that's the other thing, a question I have for you is, so that's an example of the kind of thing that you'd have to have in place by the time zoning compliance?
Right.
Permit would be submitted?
Correct.
Approved by you as the town planning director, okay.
I'll ask one question, then maybe we'll get to, but I just, along that same line, will, because I don't know, if the planning board held a discussion about this, was that a, was a landscape plan provided at that time, or not yet? Or was there a conditional approval, or something like that?
I don't, I was not the planning director at the time, so I can't speak to that.
Okay, we'll wait, and maybe, okay, I'll ask later.
And I'll just direct your attention to the top of that page on RD zero-zero-eight. When you received this response from Mr. Day, and he says there do not put it on the agenda, did you understand him to be asking you not to further process the application?
I will object to that. The record and document speaks for itself, and it would be speculative to guess what was in Mr. Day's mind, or what he was.
I didn't, Mr. Chairman, I didn't ask what was in Mr. Day's mind, I asked what your witness as the planning director understood the request to me.
All right, um, so we're going to say, sustaining, can you rephrase the question?
Did you stop processing this application after you received this email from Mr. Day?
No, I did not.
And why not?
I didn't interpret his email to say, stop processing the application. I interpreted his email to say, we're not ready for review by the board.
So, in terms of the ordinance isn't in effect at the time, your testimony yesterday, and I think we've covered this ground some today, was that the, I'm trying to get my dates right, May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. What was the ordinance that the town board adopted that day?
What ordinance was in effect on that date?
Well, I believe they adopted an ordinance on May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, correct?
Yes, they?
And that's the ordinance that, what happens to that in August of twenty-twenty-one?
It is void by the town attorney, and effectively doesn't exist.
When that was repealed, the, what ordinance went back into effect?
The two thousand and eighteen ordinance.
And then I believe your testimony was, it wasn't until December of twenty-twenty-one that the new ordinance was adopted?
Correct.
So during that period of time, how were you processing applications? Were things going to the planning board for approval?
During that time, during the May to August time?
Yeah.
Um.
Yes, sorry.
I don't remember. I don't, I, we, at the time we had, let me just scratch that. Yes, there were items going to the planning board during that time.
Do you remember, they, what ordinance were they being considered pursuant to at that time?
They were being considered pursuant to the May eighteenth ordinance, but any decisions that were made during that time were repealed at the time that the ordinance was repealed.
I'm going to direct your attention to RD zero-zero-six. Ask you to briefly identify that document.
It's the May, A, May seventeen, site plan submitted.
Paul, anything about your review of this plan triggering your mind to definition of group development?
No, as I stated earlier, I was trying to determine what the building, what the buildings being requested were, so I could determine if they were, this was a permitted use development in the Mountain Villas District at that time.
There's nothing about that plan that initially said this is inconsistent with?
Not, no.
I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I have one, so the, you did ask the question then, saying what type of homes or buildings, right, will be built? Did you ever get an answer to that? I don't, we haven't seen it.
There was the submittal in October that provided more information on the site plan.
Okay.
And Eisenhower, I have a few other questions, but if the board still has questions, I don't want to interrupt. You can continue.
Yeah, I just wondered if it was, if there was, that question was answered and on the October submittal, they provided that detail? For those, okay.
My understanding during the break, Ms. Eisenhower, is that you were able to locate the attachment to the email between you and Ms. Bernstein, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I believe, and just want to make sure for the record, that that has been reviewed by all councils?
Correct. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Hennig? And my understanding is there is no objection?
No objection, if we can just identify that this is an attachment to a particular email?
I think it says it right there at the bottom, attachment to exhibit three.
Exhibit three, but exhibit three includes multiple emails. Are there any other attachments?
What's the RD number again on that?
We don't know what the RD number, because it wasn't, it was, it was the property owner's exhibit.
Ms. Eisenhower, do you have exhibit three in front of you?
No, uh.
The foreword?
I have the. Yes, I have the email.
Okay, can you tell the board which email to Ms. Bernstein that what has been marked as attachment to exhibit three was attached to?
It was the Tuesday, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, at eleven nineteen AM.
And can you?
What is that exhibit number now, the attachment?
Property owner's exhibit number three, and it is an attachment to the, we'll mark it, the February, Josh, on February twenty-second email?
February twenty-second, yes.
And is there a time?
Eleven nineteen AM.
Lee, can you read it on here, right?
Yeah.
Can I hold on a minute and answer questions if I don't have a count?
Okay.
Okay, and Ms. Eisenhower, can you tell me what this attachment is a copy of?
That attachment is a copy of a version of the Mountain Villas District that was adopted in twenty-twenty, but was not properly codified, and we did not realize that until a later date, so it has not been considered adopted.
Can I just ask one clarification on the attached email time? That, there are two that, I guess it's this. So on the nine fifty-eight AM email, you say C attached? Let me know if you have any further questions? It was, that wasn't the one?
No, it was the eleven nineteen AM.
Okay, I see, there, okay.
Is it possible to pull up section fifty-four, two forty-nine of the Mountain Village ordinance?
Fifty-four, two forty-nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Fifty-four, two forty-nine?
Two forty-nine.
Which version?
Of this, I apologize, of the, what we call the old version. If you could scroll up, actually, I believe, to the very top. Oh, sorry, you're in two forty-eight, I'm sorry. Ms. Eisenhower, do you see section fifty-four, two forty-nine of the old Mountain Village District, Mountain Village District ordinance up on the screen?
Yes.
Is that the version of the ordinance, Mountain Village ordinance, that was in effect on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one?
Yes.
And you've been talking about your analysis with regard to the site plans and whether they were permitted uses?
Yes.
And when you looked at that, were you determining that the site plans fell within section B one A, dwellings multifamily?
Correct.
Okay, and if you could scroll, I apologize, very slowly down. Keep going. So those are the permitted uses, and then if you keep going, there, you can stop there, thank you. Do you see section C prohibited uses?
Yes.
And then there's also D, conditional uses, correct?
Correct.
But nowhere in this is there anything saying group developments, is there?
Correct.
You also just testified before Mr. Hennig that it was, it was the practice, or it was common for zoning compliance permit applications to be reviewed before the planning board without a landscape plan, and they could be approved on the condition that that would be submitted before a building permit is approved, correct?
Zoning permit, but yes.
Or zoning permits, okay. Is that the same practice with regard to stormwater and erosion documents?
Yes.
And is that the same practice with regard to sanitary permits?
Yes.
Okay, and then one other question, when Mr. Nor was talking with you, you mentioned that sometimes you would look at a planner's dictionary, correct?
Correct.
Is the planner's dictionary binding on your interpretation?
It's not binding.
Would you look at other dictionaries at times too?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
One question, so which version is the one that you attached in the email then, as opposed to this version?
It's a version that was a, that was a, a public hearing was held, the board reviewed it and adopted it, but it was not codified, so it's considered not approved. So it's not either one of these versions.
So that, so that was the one that was the May eighteenth, like change, that was then?
No, different one.
Okay, so the one that you attached in the email was, was a version that was valid at the time?
It was not valid.
Okay, well then what was the, so the, so the version that you attached was, was an axed, like incorrect?
It's just irrelevant, yeah. It was incorrect.
Okay, I don't understand what.
It's confusing.
Very confusing.
Including.
Do you still have the attachment, Josh, on?
Oh, I got it, I'm taking your pen.
And was that admitted, deserved?
Oh, that was my understanding, it was considered.
There's no objection to this being admitted from?
Do we need to admit her email attachment as a?
That's what, yeah, just asked that, and I apologize.
So I don't think we officially did admit that?
Right, yeah, so.
So any objections, that? Okay, so we will consider submitted to evidence. It's, this is attachment that to? Property owner's exhibit number three.
Ms. Eisenhower, I'll try to be brief, but I'd like to pick up where, is it?
Mr. Deroni, call me Chris.
Didn't want to miss say that. Okay, your question was about this, the exhibit three, because, and the attachment?
That's right.
So, when we're looking at the email here, and I don't have this blow up, but this is from Tuesday, February twenty-second. It says, best to send to you, Adrian, correct? You have, I think it's the second to last page.
Yes.
And it says, thanks also, you were going to send me the wording in the U V ordinance that this project is subject to rather than the version that's currently on MuniCode. Read that correctly?
Yes.
So it's a request for the current version, correct?
Correct.
And what I hear you say about the attachment, which if you flip the page to February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, at eleven nineteen AM, which is what you testified is the attachment that you say just was the attached, which you sent her, was not in fact that actual code. It was another code that wasn't properly codified, correct?
Correct.
So she asked for the current, you mistakenly, accidentally sent her the wrong one?
Yes.
As the attachment?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not the one that applied, it was a mistaken one, just clarification?
Yes.
Does that get to your question?
Yeah, it did, because I see that the conditional uses have group developments and cottage clusters on this version, that was the attachment, but they weren't on the one that was just on the screen. And that's, I was trying to see which, what those two versions were.
And actually, that's where I was going to go next, which was what was on the screen at two forty-nine here.
May I ask a question before you go?
Yes.
Adrian, just for clarification for everybody, so, and for my thing. So MuniCode, I'm assuming, is a public, or a publicized list of what our ordinances should be? MuniCode is electronic version, I'm assuming, where you can go access all the codes?
Yes.
And every, certain people have access to that MuniCode?
It's available to the public.
Okay, and what we're saying is that the stuff that was in MuniCode was not current at that time?
There was confusion about this twenty-twenty ordinance and whether or not it had been appropriately adopted. So that was, so what was in, so once we determined that was not the case?
So what was in MuniCode was not correct?
What was in MuniCode was correct.
Was correct, okay.
And just to follow up on that?
Thank you.
There's a delay usually between when something gets adopted and when it makes it to MuniCode, correct?
Yeah, right.
So town's official ordinance is what's in its, I think the clerk's book, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's why you would have been asked, I'm seeing MuniCode, but I want to make sure I've got what the actual one is, correct?
Correct.
And the incorrect one was what was sent?
Correct.
Get to both questions, okay. I wanted to throw up here, this is, we'll work our way back. This is five dash two forty-nine, a portion of it, you see that at the, I'll take that out just so you can see it. This is the same thing that was listed up before, fifty-four dash two forty-nine. And in here, in this section, permitted uses, and this is the version that applied, correct? At least, that's town's position, okay. Under permitted uses, group development is not listed, correct?
Correct.
And under prohibited uses? And under prohibited uses. See, it says, "Any use not specifically listed as a permitted use or as a use by right subject to special requirements or a conditional use is prohibited." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
And as we read from the other section, this was identified, group development was identified as a conditional use, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so wasn't permitted, wasn't prohibited, conditional use for group development, correct?
Correct.
I'm going to go back.
Can I ask a question? The, is the application or the site plan describing, what, I want to say what I think it is, what, what is that site development plan asking to build?
Which one?
Actually, it doesn't, the, the May, the May, the original May submittal, that's asking to build. Is it something in this list, or is it?
That's what I was trying to determine when I asked for more information.
Okay, so we don't know at that point?
Right.
I'm thinking I either heard incorrectly or you misspoke, because I was thinking you were saying that conditional use group was listed as a conditional use, but it's not here, right? It's in the one that never knew, got codified.
Let me clarify, and I'll just throw it up. Just so we have clarification here. I'll answer the question first. No, it, the provision that says it's a conditional use is part of this code. We've gotten hung up on a, an attachment to an email that I think Ms. Eisenhower has said was the wrong one, but that's not what I'm citing for. This is from the 2018 code that the town considers to be the code that applies.
Can you show that, pardon?
Yes, and pull that right back up.
And we're considering this, I think we're referring to this as the old code?
That was what had been referred to as the old code.
Okay.
Just give me a moment.
Doesn't mean.
It's just an attachment.
So the developer was given this, but it was not correct?
Wait, let, yeah. Notice, I mean, we can have discussion all you want, make sure it's loud enough that everyone can hear if we're going to have discussions, and let's make sure that Ms. Eisenhower is not answering any questions, because you're not directing them at her. If you have questions, please correct them at her.
Yeah, just to clarify, so you were just saying this, this was received by the homeowner, right?
Yeah, that's my area.
Correct.
Okay. That's where it's listed as a conditional use.
Is that a question, Ms. Eisenhower?
And I'll phrase it into a question, so that we can do that. Ms. Eisenhower, is this the section I previously, when I was first cross-examining you, I brought up 54-318, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and this is the section that says as a conditional use, group development, and is identifying it as such, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that is part of what we have been calling the old code, correct? Okay. So not listed in Mountain Village, but part of the zoning ordinance, correct? Yes.
Yes.
So I will go back here if I can. Wanted to ask a few other follow-up questions. I think Mr. Henning had asked you about this section, 54-35. And he was talking about how this was the compliance permit provision, correct?
Correct.
And that it wasn't uncommon for you to have additional information that needed to come in before the permit was approved, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and in no way whatsoever am I insinuating that he left something out, but sometimes when we don't flip the next page, we can miss things. This is the first portion of Section 54-35, correct?
Correct.
And the second portion is on the next page, correct?
Correct.
And the second portion says, "The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article." Did I read that correct?
Yes.
So the ordinance says the application must contain it, correct?
Correct.
So not just get it in before permit's approved, correct?
Correct.
Or has to be part of the application, correct?
Yes.
And what article is that, sir?
That is, yes. 54-35.
It's Article 2, I believe, though.
Section 54-35 is the citation to. Just give me one second. Couple other follow-ups. The entire zoning ordinance is your, essentially your rulebook, correct?
Correct.
Not just the Mountain Village section, correct?
Right.
So there are requirements in the Mountain Village section, correct?
Correct.
There are requirements in other parts of the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
You have to apply them all to the projects, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just because something's not in Mountain Village doesn't mean that it might not be an requirement to a particular project, correct?
Yes.
Kind of like that provision right there that says that the information needs to be in the application, correct?
Yes.
I think you were asked by Mr. Henning how you interpreted Mr. Day's, I think it was May 18th email. I'll throw that out.
Objection, you did rephrase it and ask her what she did in reaction to it.
Forgive me, and I withdraw that statement, and we'll go with what Mr. Henning said. What did you do in response to it? Okay, and I think your response was that you proceeded to process the application, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, this language here, please do not put this on the agenda until we can get back with you, okay? You're still processing, is what you're saying, correct?
Correct.
Now, when you got the email on January 6th. I think that's here, RD 34. Says, "Adrian, Happy New Year, wanted to check in with you regarding the Robin Hood residential project. I am in ongoing coordination with the client, wanted to verify that notices were not sent out to the neighbors, and that we were not on the January 10th Planning Board of a Judgment meeting agenda." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So you have a request for a hold on May 18th, you have a request in January 6th saying, "I'm just checking, making sure we're not on the agenda." You kept processing the one, you say you kept processing the one in May 18th, but this is the foundation for you to have sent out your June 8th determination that the developer asked for a hold, wasn't it?
What page, what page is this on?
Yeah, this is RD 34. And I can, if it helps, I can throw up your June determination, if that would be helpful as well.
No, can you just rephrase, can you just restate the question?
So this email right here that says, "Hey, making sure we're not on the January 10th Planning Board Agenda," that's the foundation for you to make a determination in June that, that developer had asked that their application be put on hold, correct?
Correct.
Which application?
Which application?
Thank you.
May 17th application.
Okay. Well, let's look at that, because I don't believe May 17th is mentioned anywhere in, remember, well, let's go back. Okay, so you get that on January 10th. I'd like to go back to the, here, they're not talking about the May 17th, are they? They're talking about their original October 13th submittal, correct?
According to that letter, yes.
Yeah, so not May 17th, the October application, okay? Just to make sure, Mr. Hansen had that information. Going back to the determination, and I guess the, where I'm getting at with this is, you say on May 18th, they ask for a hold, you keep processing, correct?
Correct.
But it was your practice, and you did it in, starting in January, there's a request to make sure that they're not on the January agenda, and you use that as the foundation in July to determine that they had put their application on hold, correct?
Correct, because that was the last communication I had gotten from them since that time.
Okay, so in your practice, it would be sufficient to just ask not to be on an agenda in order to constitute a hold, wouldn't it?
Correct.
That's what you say there, okay. If I have, I think that might be my last question, I just need to check. Those are my questions. Thank you, Ms. Eisenhower.
Ms. Eisenhower, I appreciate all your time. I have one thing I want to follow up on, and I, I want to echo actually.
One, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I want to echo the sentiment that it is important, as Mr. Nor said, to read the language in the ordinance. If we could pull up 56-35 again and look to that sentence that Mr. Nor asked Ms. Eisenhower about, that would be great.
Can you search it?
It wouldn't let me search earlier, that's why I had to drag the.
I know, Mom.
Sorry.
54, 35, yeah.
Oh, sorry, guys. Counting hard. 30,000?
Yeah. There you go. Okay.
There we go.
So it was the, I think on the next page. The sentence that Mr. Nor highlighted was, "The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of," and I want to focus on these last two words, because those are the operative words, "this article," correct?
Correct.
Can you please scroll up? This article is referring to Article 2 Administration, correct?
Correct.
Can you scroll down just a little bit? In Article 2, keep going. Article 2 ends, keep going. Keep going to the end of Article 2. There we go, Article 2 ends right there, before 54-69, correct?
Correct.
So nowhere in Article 2 that that section is referring to is the Mountain Village ordinance that Mr. Nor was trying to imply was to be read into that provision, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
I think I'd asked you earlier, the entire ordinance applies to an application, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so not just sections like Mountain Village, correct?
Correct.
So this, right here, if I could. This is, I think as Mr. Henning pointed out, this is the compliance permit, correct?
Correct.
This is the permit theoretically that was being applied for, correct?
Correct.
So it's very relevant to the application, correct?
Yes.
So it's not as though, because it doesn't reference Mountain Village, somehow this doesn't apply, correct?
Correct.
It does apply to the application, May application that was provided, correct?
Yes.
Just a couple others. When you say you kept processing the application, can you tell the board what you did?
I may have misspoken when I say kept processing the application, but I didn't interpret that to mean I shouldn't review it any further. I just interpreted the email to mean they, they were not ready to be put on a board agenda.
Which is the same basis you used for finding a hold over seven months later, starting January 6, 2022, correct?
Sure.
So you didn't do anything more to process it, is what I'm hearing, correct?
I did not.
I'm trying to understand the RD 34, 034, where you took them to be referencing the May 17th as being on hold and not the October 13th one. I thought I heard you say that you recognized this was a separate, and maybe I interpreted the words you said and didn't actually hear you say it, but, so I'm trying to understand the discrepancy.
As Mr. Nor pointed out, the letter that was submitted with the October application states that it is the original application, which I overlooked in my processing of it the first time, and understood the October submittal to be an amendment to this May amendment, the May submittal.
And then later you understood it differently.
Right, and just now I understood it differently.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions from board? Any other questions from Ms. Eisenhower? Okay, thank you, you may step down. Okay, no, any objections? Okay, let's take a five-minute recess, return at 7:36, by that clock, not my clock.
Mics are live.
Yes.
All right, oh.
No one says that.
That's great, though, we love that. That's what we need.
One might think you've been in a courtroom once or twice.
On occasion. Yes, I know, yeah. I'm learning so much about your professional.
So Scott, how's, how's mission doing? How's mission doing? You still there? Oh, good for you. I didn't know that. Oh, I'm happy about that for you. Where are you? Are you at another hospital?
I will be... Let's have that conversation another time when you're walking around our neighborhood.
Good, very good. Excellent, excellent, excellent. But I'm glad to hear that. Very glad to hear that. I have a little dog who just loves these. Oh, God. You drink a bottle of water and he goes crazy. It's 34 degrees out. Ooh, it's cold out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, Alyssa. Oh, can you hear me now, Alyssa?
Break is turning into longer than you said.
It is a little longer. The break is over at any moment.
It's over.
Well, uh... We'll let the chairman see the judge out. Yeah. Here come to the rest of the board.
Here they come.
I was just showing my kids. Hi Venus, hi Ryan. Hi Oliver. Need these.
Bring the meeting to order, please.
Oh, look, it even... It even canceled.
Mr. Chairman, the board's ready to proceed. Yes, please proceed. I'll call Shannon Tuck.
It'd be my pleasure to swear at Ms. Tuck. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Evening, Ms. Tuck. Could you state for the record your current occupation, please?
I'm the town manager for the town of Woodfin.
And in your career, have you had other positions? Walk us through your other professional stops.
Well, most recently, I worked in the field of planning and development before coming to the town as town manager, and I held a number of different roles in that field for over 20 years.
For 20 years as a zoning official of some sort?
Correct.
And during that time, did you achieve certified zoning official status, CZO?
I did.
Ms. Eisenhower testified she was planning director for the town of Woodfin until August 29th. How was her position staffed after that date?
I filled in as the interim planning director and zoning administrator.
Until approximately when, if you recall? I have October 24th.
Yeah, I think that's right. I was going to say October.
Prior to your time as interim planning director, what was your interaction with this application?
I worked closely with Ms. Eisenhower in reviewing the record of and the evolution of the project.
And after you became the interim planning director, what was your interaction with it after that point?
I reviewed the plans.
I'm going to direct you to Tab 6, RD 030. Particular... 030. Tell us what your recollection of this plan is.
This was the plan that had been submitted in December of '21.
And to your recollection, that was the most recent version of the plan that had been
Yes. Yes.
And so you, at that point, as interim planning director, reviewed this plan?
Uh, yes. Well, I didn't review it in any great detail. I think we were still waiting to know what the applicant's plans were.
So do you recall when you formed an opinion about what sort of plan this was under the applicable zoning ordinance?
I... I thought it was, would have been classified as a group development.
Do you recall what your basis for deciding it was a group development was?
I was looking at the definition, the town's definition of group development.
So that's a defined term in the zoning ordinance?
It is.
I'm going to direct you to the, what we're calling the old ordinance in Section 54-5.
Yes.
We had looked at this earlier this evening. Keep going with the definition. So reading that definition, what was it about that plan that we just looked at that led you to conclude it was a group development?
There were two or more principal structures built on a single lot.
And were there any other features of this definition that you thought applied to that plan?
Not real... no.
You didn't have the opinion it was an apartment court, for instance, or a housing project?
No.
So it was solely because of the multiple principal structures in the same property?
Yes.
Do you recall what changed about the application after that opinion was shared with the applicant?
Ultimately, the applicant revised the plan to combine or consolidate all of the units into a single multifamily building.
And do you recall what your opinion was about what would... what the consequence of that would be under the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it would not be classified as a group development.
If it's not a group development, what would it be then?
A multifamily development.
And your understanding was that's a permitted use within Mountain Village?
It is.
Would there have been anything conditional about that use?
No.
And so since there wasn't anything conditional, what's the next approval step?
It would be a ministerial review before the planning board.
I'm going to direct you to...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So this plan that we just looked at was the one on December, whatever it was, that had, that you said it looked like group development. What... which plan shows the other version? The single unit? Okay, all right, we'll get there.
So turning your attention to Tab 21, RD 108. Recall receiving this email?
Yes.
And what was your understanding about what this email was asking you to do as the interim planning director?
They were asking me to make certain determinations about the project.
And specifically what were they asking about? Just in Section Number 1 there, what's the request about the...
That if they were to submit a revised plan that consolidated all of the units into a single building, that it would... And that it didn't have any other conditional uses associated with it, that it would be... Well, they say that an administrative decision by myself, but I later disagreed with that, said it should be a ministerial review before the planning board.
And so turning your attention to, it's under Tab 22, RD 111. This is the letter you sent back in response to that request from the applicant?
It is.
And so skipping down to that first paragraph under 1 there, you gave your opinion in that. Can you just sort of summarize what you said?
That if all of the units were consolidated into a single building, that it would not be defined as a group development, and it would be instead a multifamily building.
I believe you testified just a minute ago that you were asked whether it would be a ministerial review that you, as interim planning director, would do. Is that right?
They asked, yeah. It was their opinion or their interpretation that could be an administrative review by just myself.
And you said you disagreed with that?
Correct.
And is that why your letter here includes the letter from Sam Craig?
That's correct, yes.
So you were familiar with that letter when you supplied it back to the applicant?
I was.
And had you also reviewed the provisions in the zoning ordinance that Mr. Craig refers to in his letter?
Yes, I did.
You were in agreement that that was the process that should be followed?
Yes, I was.
So the next step would have been to... What was the next step in approval under that letter? that letter?
Well, should they submit a revised plan that had a, a single building, then the next step would, would actually be for staff to review it and identify if there were any additional information that was needed. And then, once that was satisfied, move it on and schedule it for the planning board to review.
And what you mentioned, that administrator review and then planning board approval, was that going to be the last oversight from the town in the process?
No.
Can you sort of briefly describe for the board what, what are the further steps after site plan approval?
After the site plan is approved, we expect more, more detail to the plans or more revisions because it, once the zoning permit is issued, other construction permits can be issued. So that's the step, or that's the time when we look for other necessary approvals so, or, or other utility approvals, so water allocation, sewer allocation, any additional clarifications to the site plan that would be needed, any other permits that might be needed. We would wait to get confirmation of that information before we issued the permit.
So, and then, once permit issuance happens, what's, what's the next step for the developer at that point?
Then they would be able to get their other construction permits, their other site permits.
Is there any further step after that in your oversight?
Yes, the, after construction's complete, staff would inspect the site for compliance with what was approved on the zoning permit, with that approved site plan, and then only after that is satisfied, then a certificative occupancy can be issued.
All right, I'm going to direct your attention to, it's Tab 24. It's on page RD 124. And summarize what it is for the board, please.
This is a letter from the attorneys of the developer. This is the letter dated October 18th, 2022, responding to my zoning determination letter.
If you would scroll down where we can see the bottom of that page. And there, the quoted language, do you recognize that?
Yes.
Is that your opinion about the effect of a change into a single building?
It is.
So have you scrolled down to RD 136?
Can I ask a question while you're on that? Why is it called Robin Hood Road Permit Application?
It's a portion of the site.
It's because, it's because it's Robin Hood Road?
A portion of the site, but it's Robin Hood Road, I believe.
Is there a Robin Hood Road?
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay. I didn't realize that there was actually a Robin Hood Road.
And I think the address is 999 Robin Hood.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, thank you.
No, it is, it's, well, it says Beaver Brook.
I thought it was...
I believe that is in evidence that it's 999...
Yeah, 999 Robin Hood.
Robin Hood, Robin Hood Road, okay. I was just curious.
Right there, it's perfect. So do you recognize this plan?
Yes.
What was this plan?
That was the, let's forget the date, the October 14th, 2022 revised site plan.
That came along with the letter we looked at?
Yes, that came with the letter.
Oops, submitted then. And what was your opinion as to the completeness of their application at that point?
I thought the application was complete.
Yeah, we're anxious.
And again, you testified a moment ago, there's initial site plan review.
136.
You thought that that was sufficient to pass that first step, right?
Correct.
And why, again, is a single, you said it would be a single multifamily dwelling that would be permitted in the Mountain Village zone?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You said this, if it's, if it's a single building, your opinion was that made it a multifamily dwelling and that was permitted in Mountain Village?
Yes.
And again, just to review, not under a condition of any kind, under the applicable ordinance, but a, a by right use that didn't require?
That's correct.
A quasi judicial proceeding, okay. The appeal suggests that this is three buildings, and they're connected by breezeways. Do you see anything on the plan that indicates that?
No.
Would you expect to see connecting features of a plan, say whether they're under an enclosed space or not at this stage?
I'm sure I understand your question.
Can you tell whether that's going to be all enclosed space or not based on, on that design?
I, I mean, it looks like it's all enclosed space to me.
And you would have opportunities to further verify that in the further steps of the review process, is that right?
I could, but I don't know if it's necessary because the applicant stated that it's a single building, and their designer stated that it's a single building, and it's their professional obligation to provide correct and factual information on their plans.
So you don't have to take their word for it, in other words?
I do have to take their word for it.
You can take your word for it, but it's very, it's, it's a certified word, I guess.
Right.
I'll put it that way, okay.
They have professional licenses that they have to be responsible for.
So you don't see more than one principal structure here?
I do not.
What do you, so the, when the appeal suggests that more than one principal structure could be built here, based on this plan, what's your opinion about that?
Honestly, I was confused. I don't see how this is more than one principal structure.
Because you don't see any additional structures, as you understand it, under the applicable ordinance, is that right?
I do not, and furthermore, the plan refers to a building. Or a structure, the structure.
So another thing suggesting in the appeal is that this is either an apartment court or housing development according to a planner's dictionary, and you heard some testimony earlier about a planner's dictionary. Are you familiar with a planner's dictionary?
I am.
And what do you consider a planner's dictionary to be?
It's a reference.
Is there anything that requires you to apply the definitions in the dictionary?
There's not, there is nothing, no.
Do you find anything persuasive in the applicable ordinance that would lead you to characterize this plan as either an apartment court or housing development?
I, I don't.
Again, those are examples in the ordinance of a group development. You don't see anything in this plan that looks like a group development?
I do not.
So looking through the redesigns of this plan from start to finish, do you, in 20 years of experience as a zoning official, find anything unacceptable about revisions to a plan over time?
Based on the town's ordinance, no.
Is it common in your experience to have revisions to plans before they're finally approved?
It's very common.
And are you aware of any rule of the zoning ordinance or, or in law that requires you to stop a process at some certain number of submissions?
No.
So there can be any number of redesigns in, in the process?
Yes.
I have nothing further at this time, Ms. Chair. Thank you.
No, Tuck.
Ms. Tuck, there's been a lot of information going around. Hopefully, we can synthesize this a little bit later. That's our hope, but I also think we can provide a little more context to the board about why we're actually here right now.
Mm-hmm.
Before I do that, I just wanted to ask, was your interpretation of the December 20th, 2021 site plan being a group development inconsistent with Ms. Eisenhower's interpretation where she found that it was a permitted use?
The, I'm sorry, can you, do you mind stating that again?
Yes, correct. Ms. Eisenhower previously testified that she interpreted the December 20th, 2021 plan to be a permitted use under the Mountain Village ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And your interpretation, though, was different than that, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the town, HS Robin Hood was receiving inconsistent information from the town, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'd like to kind of jump to why we're here, and to provide a little more context. We're here because the petitioners, CRLU...
I'm going to object to this as a question.
I, that's what I'm doing, if you could let me get there, please. CRLU and the Bernstein's appealed your determination letter dated September 30th, 2022, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And your determination is behind Tab 22, so it's RD 111 through 116, correct? Okay, and you did it with Mr. Henning a little bit, but just for the board's sake, can you summarize what your official determinations were in the September 30th, 2022 letter?
That if all of the units, well, first of all, that the previous plan would be classified as a group development, that however, if all the units were consolidated into a single multifamily building, that it would not be a conditional use and would not be a group development. And, and also that it would be a ministerial review before the planning board.
And now I'd like to turn to what the petitioners' arguments are with respect to each of those determinations. So if you could turn to, it's Tab 26 and then RD, starting at RD 152. And that is the start of the appeal application that was filed by the Bernstein's and CRLU that has led to this appeal here. And if you could turn to RD 155?
Yes.
And do you see where it says, these are the alleged heirs that the Bernstein's and CRLU have, have alleged with regard to your determination? Do you see where it says heir number one, single building slash multifamily determination?
Yes.
I'd like to start there. You would agree that in this appeal application, the petitioners are trying to argue that the proposed development that is in the October 18th revised site plan that you were discussing that has a single building would require a quasi judicial review because it constitutes a group development, correct?
That's their determination or their interpretation, yeah.
That's what the petitioners are arguing.
Yes, that's what they are arguing.
And if you could turn to the next page, one, I believe it's RD 156. The petitioners argue, if you go the first full paragraph, do you see where they say the ZO, and I believe that's referring to zoning ordinance, define structure as any erection or construction such as buildings, towers, mashpools, booms, signs, decorations, carports, machinery, machinery and equipment? Do you see that?
I do.
Okay. And is it phrased, "structure" anywhere in the definition of group development? And if we could turn to that, I don't, it's in 50, 54-5, I believe.
Oh, you passed it.
Let's make sure that was the right second number.
You're asking me if structure appears in that definition?
In the definition, yeah, the structure as they are using it defined, does that appear anywhere in the definition of group development?
Well, I'm not sure. Are you asking me if things like buildings, towers, mashpools, booms, signs, decorations, carports, machinery, equipment show up in group development?
Just the actual phrase "structure," I guess what I'm trying to get at.
Oh, structure, the word "structure" is, yes.
But is it referring to principal structure or "structure" is what I'm getting at?
Oh, principal structure.
And those are two very different things, correct?
Yes, yes.
So if you read about halfway down in the second full paragraph, do you see where it says consequently, the first requirement for a group development is met because there will be more than one principal structures, parenthetical dwelling units and buildings erected or constructed on the property? Do you see where they are making that argument in their appeal application?
I do.
And what's your position with regard to that argument as it relates to the October 12th, October 18th, 2022 site plan?
I, I don't agree.
Okay, why not?
Because there, to me, clearly, there's one structure, one principal structure is what houses the principal use. The principal use are residential units, it's a multifamily building, and so there's one building, and dwelling units don't constitute individual structures, they're part of a single structure.
Are the dwelling units part of the use of that principal structure? Is that a way to say it?
They are, yes.
Okay. But under the petitioners' argument, they would be arguing that because there's up to 110 dwelling units and the building, there's up to potentially 111 principal structures. Is that right?
I'm not sure if that's exactly what they intend or what they mean, but I, I don't agree that there's more than one principal structure.
And if you could go back to 54-5, and you talked about this a little bit with Mr. Henning as well, but the appellants just below that are trying to analogize the building that is in the October 18th, 2022 site plan to an apartment court or housing development. And they're trying to do that, housing projects, I'm sorry, housing projects and apartment courts. Now, when I'm reading that, it says that those are, quote, "examples of a group development," correct?
Correct.
So that means in order to be an example of the group development, you would have to apply the definition of group development to be an apartment court or housing project, correct?
I would agree with that, yes.
So by definition, a housing project in an apartment court would need two or more principal structures?
Yes.
And that's not what's reflected in the October 18th, 2022 site plan, is it?
Correct.
Okay, I'd also like to take a look at Section 54-249. Give you a minute to get back there. You're going to have to jump then back to definitions, just a warning. I do better. So is it your position, we are now looking at the section of the Mountain Village ordinance, Ms. Tuck, is it your position that what was reflected in the October 18th, 2022 site plan constitutes a permitted use because it falls within the definition of... plan constitutes a permitted use because it falls within the definition of dwellings multifamily?
That is my opinion, yes.
And unfortunately, I'm going to ask you to jump back to 54-5 to definition of dwellings multifamily. 54-5, sorry, oh, sorry. No, dwellings multifamily. And here, it defines dwellings multiple family to me, it means a dwelling containing three or more dwelling units, is that correct?
Yes.
And then, a dwelling unit is defined as a group of rooms constituting all or part of a dwelling which are arranged, designed, used, or intended for use exclusively as living quarters for one family. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And that's exactly what's depicted in the October 18th, 2022 site plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but under petitioner's argument, any building that contains three or more dwelling units constitutes a group development which would require conditional use, correct?
That does appear to be what they're saying, yes.
And so that would, petitioner's argument would effectively render the Mountain Village provision meaningless because now it would move from a permitted use to a conditional use, isn't that correct?
Correct.
I also want to be clear, for the dwellings multifamily, there is a floor, I say not physical floor, but a floor as to the number of dwelling units, three, correct?
Yes.
But there's no ceiling on how many dwelling units you could have in that building to still be a dwellings multifamily, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'd like to now turn to the petitioner's argument number two, and that's on RD 157. And I'm just going to read that into the record, it says, "The classification of the proposed development as a group development means that the proposed use cannot be approved through a ministerial review by the planning board. As provided in the Z.O., which refers to zoning ordinance, group developments within the Mountain Village District are considered conditional uses, which requires the submission of a special use permit and approval by the town's Board of Adjustments in a quasi judicial proceeding." Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Okay, so this argument is basically rises and falls with whether or not a single building with multiple dwelling units constitutes a group development, correct?
Yes.
And as you just testified, a single building with multiple dwelling units meets the plain language of a dwellings multifamily, correct?
Correct.
And a dwellings multifamily is expressly listed as a permitted use under the Mountain Village ordinance, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'd like to turn now to petitioner's arguments under their heir number three, which is on that same page. This is where the petitioners, I believe, are starting to challenge your determination that the old ordinance applies to the zoning application, so this starts to get into the permit choice issues, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and on the, I think it's all the way, they have, they go through kind of a history of the various site plans, and then if you turn to page RD 160, we get to their actually conclusion or argument that they make. And then at the bottom, it's sentenced towards the bottom, that starts with, "As a result, the developer's failure to respond to the town's questions resulted in a discontinuance of the application review and the version of the development regulations in place as of January 22 applies to this application, not the version of the ordinance in place as of May 17, 2021." Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Do you agree with that statement?
I do not.
Why not?
Because I believe that the developer did respond to the town's questions within a reasonable time period.
And Ms. Eisenhower previously testified to those facts, too, is that correct?
Yes. And I had reviewed that record with Ms. Eisenhower, too. Along with Ms. Eisenhower.
In fact, Ms. Eisenhower actually reached, issued a determination on July 20th, 2022 that the zoning application remained valid, correct?
Yes.
And my understanding is that you took over as the interim planning director and zoning administrator in August for Ms. Eisenhower?
I did.
Okay, and you remained in that position until October 24th?
Thereabouts.
For take? So in that role, you would have been aware if anyone appealed the determination made by Ms. Eisenhower on July 20th, that the zoning application remained valid, right?
Yes.
And did anyone file any, any appeal of that determination made by Ms. Eisenhower?
No.
Okay, and in your role as a, as a planning director, zoning administrator and, and town manager, are you familiar with the time period in which someone has to appeal a determination made by a zoning administrator?
I am.
And what is that time period?
30 days.
Okay, and is that North Carolina law?
It is.
Do you know the statute offhand by any chance? Is it 160D?
160D.
405D?
I know it's 160D, I don't know what's.
Do we have that on? I don't know if we do. So 160D-405D. Okay, and this, is this the statute, the North Carolina statute that you are referencing that sets forth the 30-day time period?
It is.
Okay, and it says, under D, "The owner or other party has 30 days from receipt of the written notice of determination within which to file an appeal. Any other person withstanding to appeal has 30 days from receipt from any source of actual or constructive notice of the determination within which to file the appeal," correct?
Yes.
So absent an appeal within 30 days, there's no right to actually appeal a determination under North Carolina law, correct? I would just say, I'm asking her, she was the one that said she could apply this as her inner role and capacity as a zoning administrator to determine how appeals are handled. I'll ask it this way, Ms. Tuck, did anyone appeal Ms. Eisenhower's July 20th determination?
No.
And has the time passed for them to, to file an appeal?
Yes.
Again, it's in her role to have to apply these, these statutes and ordinances as the zoning administrator and town manager.
30 days have passed.
So I believe we've determined for, on the previous witness, that that's part of their knowledge to be able to make this determination, so then I'm going to say that you're overruled? So you can continue?
And is there a similar time period under Woodfin's zoning ordinance to appeal determinations?
Yes.
And is that also 30 days?
Yes.
So under both North Carolina law and Woodfin's local ordinance, there's a 30-day period in which you have to file an appeal of a determination made by the zoning administrator, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear an answer.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I want to turn now to heir number four, which is on RD 161. In, in the first full paragraph on that page, right underneath heir number four, I believe the petitioners say, there is no, or I apologize, I jumped ahead, "The town also aired in concluding that the August 2022 and October 2022 applications were amendments to the May 2021 applications." Do you see where it says that?
I do.
Do you agree with that?
I, I mean, I, no, I don't think I do agree with that.
Okay, because is it your position that the revised site plans were just that, revised site plans, and that they weren't amendments to the actual application?
That's certainly how it looked to me, yes.
And that's, as you've testified, the normal course of how this process works in all of your experience serving with planning departments, correct?
Yes.
All right, if you go, I believe there's also a section that says, "There is no amendment process provided under the town's zoning ordinance, so the submission of the new site plans and applications in August 2022 and October 2022 that were materially and substantially different than the May 2021 application should have never been considered new applications." Do you, do you agree with that statement?
I don't.
Okay, and why not?
The ordinance, our ordinance doesn't provide any guidance on what should be considered a new application, and in absence of that guidance, we look at it as an amendment unless the applicant states otherwise.
Is there anything in the ordinance that prevents an applicant from submitting a revised site plan to address comments and questions from the zoning administrator?
No, there's no.
Okay, and their argument continues that the old ordinance should not apply. When you came to the determination that the old ordinance applied, were you looking to the permit choice statutes under North Carolina law?
I was.
Okay, and I'd like to just take a look at those with you, if that's okay. And those involve the interplay of North Carolina General Statute 160D-108 and North Carolina General Statute 143-755. We will start with the North Carolina General Statute 160D-108. Okay, and do you see that up there, Ms. Tuck?
I do.
Okay, and do you see, under section A, it says findings?
Yes.
Would you agree that this is the General Assembly providing what the general purpose of the permit choice law is?
Yes.
I can withdraw that question, can you read what section A says into the record?
Findings, "The General Assembly recognizes that local government approval of development typically follows significant investment in site evaluation, planning, development costs, consultant fees, and related expenses. The General Assembly finds that it is necessary and desirable to provide for the establishment of certain vested rights in order to ensure reasonable certainty, stability, and fairness in the development regulation process, to secure the reasonable expectations of landowners and to foster cooperation between the public and private sectors in land use planning and development regulation. The provisions of this section in General Statute 160D-108.1 strike an appropriate balance between private expectation and, expectations and the public interest."
Thank you, okay, and then it goes on to section B, and that says, excuse me, "If a land development regulation is amended between the time of a development permit application was submitted and a development permit decision is made, or if a land development regulation is amended after a development permit decision has been challenged and found to be wrongfully denied or illegal, General Statute 143-755 applies." Are those the circumstances we have here in this case? Ms. Tuck just, I was going to say, she's already testified that she was applying the permit choice rules to make her determination that the October 18th, 2021, 2022 revised site plan was still subject to the old ordinance, and she has also testified, as the zoning administrator, it's her role to apply these, to those facts, so I'm asking if that's what she applied to make that determination.
Overruled if you're ordering the question that way.
It is, and it's also, it was also done in consultation with the town's attorney.
So there was legal advice that was provided to you as well, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I don't want to dig into what that advice was, I just am confirming that. All right, so it says then, if an application is submitted, but a rule is changed, you then turn to GS 143-755, correct?
Yes.
Oh, is that not up there? Okay. Can we blow that up? Oh, if it's up here, too. Yeah, let's, I can see this a lot easier. Yeah, it's 143-755. All right, and just reading this into the, can you, oh, I'll just read it in the record, 143-755A says, "If a development permit applicant submits a permit application for any type of development and a rule or ordinance is amended, including an amendment to any applicable land development regulation, between the time the development permit application was submitted and a development permit decision is made, the development permit applicant may choose which adopted version of the rule or ordinance will apply to the permit and use of the building, structure, or land indicated on the permit application." Did I read that correctly?
You did.
Okay, is there anything in there that's set, says an applicant is prohibited from revising a site plan during the process?
It does not.
All right, I'd like to turn now to their heir number five. And I believe we've addressed most of this already, but with Ms. Eisenhower, but their argument there at the bottom of RD 161 is, "The Z.O. states that no zoning permit shall be issued until a safe and adequate water supply and sewage disposal system is ensured and a sanitary permit is issued."
I'm sorry, where are you?
Oh, sorry, oh, no, yeah, 161 at the bottom.
Lastly?
Lastly, it's like the second to last, or third to last sentence.
Yep.
"The Z.O. states that the note, that no zoning permit shall be issued until a safe and adequate water supply and sewage disposal system is ensured and a sanitary permit is issued by the appropriate county and state agencies. To date, no such permits have been secured by the developer provided to the town as permit requirements," and that's, it goes on to the side of case, but my question to you here, again, and I believe Ms. Eisenhower testified, is, "Are those sewage disposal systems and sanitary permits required for purposes of submitting an initial application and site plan?"
They are not.
You have one other set of questions. I'm going to pre-mark this as. I'm going to pre-mark this as Exhibit 4. Ms. Tuck, if you could just review that email and let me know once you've had a chance. Do you recognize this email?
I do.
Can you tell the board what it is generally?
Oh, sorry, I didn't read the back. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, your question?
Can you just tell the board generally what this is?
This is a, an email to the then Woodfin Water, Water Authority Director about water availability and water pressure in steep slope areas that include this, the subject property.
I would like to move to admit Exhibit 4 into the record at this time.
Ms. Tuck, who's this from?
This is from me.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm happy to ask her the questions if you'd like, that I was going to.
We haven't seen the document, so I have no idea what it is.
Right, you have not seen the document.
So how do I make a determination with the objection?
So the object, so they identified it, laid a foundation, which would be sufficient enough to admit it into evidence. Whether it's relevant or not comes after you all review here the testimony, and you can give it any amount of weight that you want. The foundation's been laid as to what it is, you haven't seen it yet, so you don't know.
Then we're gonna overrule, and we'll admit it, and we'll take it.
And can you repeat the, who, who that was to, that was?
It's, it's an email from myself to Joseph Martin, who is the Woodfin Water Resources Director, and it is about asking him for information about water availability and pressure in these steep slope areas, because we were doing a zoning study to see whether or not the Mountain Village zoning designation would be appropriate in this area. So that's what we were emailing about.
And that goes to my question, this is in the record, I believe, or it's in the record of decision, there was a rezoning application on this, submitted on the same day, July 8th, and that initially included the property that's at, that's at issue in this appeal, correct?
That's correct.
But that property was subsequently removed from the rezoning application based on Ms. Eisenhower's determination that the zoning application remained valid, correct?
Correct.
That's all I have.
I have a question. Who, who do I ask?
You can only ask.
Okay. It's getting late. This doesn't look like the map with the three buildings that are all attached to each other.
So the subject property is down here, outlined in purple.
Oh, okay.
We were doing a study of a much larger area that included that.
And so this actually is the three buildings down, down here.
The single building was located here, in the, kind of in the center of the property.
Okay, okay, I got you. Thank you.
So I will ask you, so I'm gonna say, we're making, I wanna make the assumption, that you were asking the water department if they could supply water to an area if you zoned it mountain, mountain, when they called.
So Mountain Village contemplates sort of high-density residential. And, and to determine whether or not that's an appropriate designation, we wanted to understand whether or not there was adequate water in this area, so that's why we reached out to the Water Resources Director for that information.
All right, thank you.
And, and what was the answer?
I never got an answer.
But then you, so this is currently zoned, and at that time was Mountain Village. Later, you put in, you were gonna rezone it to what?
We did rezone it to R23.
What's the difference between R23 and?
R23 is a single-family zoning designation, so it would almost certainly be lower density.
Okay, and what was the reason for, for that? If this property's included, and you guys were gonna rezone it to single-family?
So part of it is just consistency with the development pattern in the area. We look at the character of the development pattern, what's, what's typical, what the terrain is like, what kind of development can it support reasonably, particularly under our steep slope standards. Also, the applicant, the applicant, or, yeah, the applicant for the development project also owns the majority of this property, and it had been, we had understood it had been put in conservation easement, so it wasn't gonna be developed anyway, so the Mountain Village zoning didn't achieve anything.
Got it. So i- if, if this application wasn't still open, then this would be rezoned, or it is rezoned, you're saying now, as, as single-family, or R whatever.
So it, yes, so this application, or the development application, when I wrote this email, we were operating under the presumption, or the understanding, that their application would have expired, because we felt at the time six months had lapsed. When we subsequently realized that six months hadn't lapsed, we removed this property from the zoning study, because you cannot have a zoning study when you have another development app, or you cannot rezone property while another development application is pending on the same piece of property.
Any other board questions?
No, that answers my question.
Do we have any other?
Mr. Portnoy, I would just ask if you have any follow-up questions based on any of the answers.
I was just going to clarify that the property at issue was taken out of the rezoning.
Because it had an open application.
Correct.
Not because it was a, whatever it was.
Not anything else, correct.
Okay, seeing no further.
No, Mr. Norris.
Oh, you are, I'm sorry, that's, that's okay.
Slow to rise.
Yeah.
Take your time, I just.
I'm sorry we're so late, but I will try to be brief, but I don't know if I can finish in 20 minutes, but we'll see, I'm really gonna hope to try to do that.
Give you 22.
Fair enough. Appreciate that flexibility. Okay, Ms. Tuck, I wanna sort of start where your testimony began. I can confirm a couple of things. One is confirming, consistent with Adrienne, that your, well, with what Adrienne testified tonight, you found the applications in December, and that came in in December 2021, August 2021, and May 21, to be group developments based on the characteristics that they had exhibited. That was, you agree with her, what she testified to tonight, is that they were group developments?
Yes.
And essentially evolving from there, you got asked later in the year, and that's the, that's the letter for you, essentially, if we consolidate this into what they claim is one building, is it still a group development or not? And your opinion was no, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll throw up a couple of things here. Just sort of to run through them, again, I'll, oh.
Yes, mine's been in that all day.
In Woodfin?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm gonna use the, just give me one moment, I apologize.
I use the internet all the time, I can find it if it's there.
Spectrum.
Spectrum. Really?
Quite a few times.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, there we go. And this is going back to the definition of group development here. Okay. So your, if I understood your testimony correctly, you were saying this, if this was one building, essentially it would be multifamily dwellings, correct? So, and again, going to the definitions here. We go to the dwellings, multiple family, and it says means a dwelling containing three or more dwelling units. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, and then right above that, I believe, is the definition, dwelling, correct? It says means a detached building designed or used exclusively as a residence or sleeping place, but does not include boarding houses, lodging houses, motels, hotels, tents, or cabins, correct?
Yes.
I'll ask you, and I'm, and I'm also comfortable to pull it up, your code doesn't define motels, hotels, correct?
I think that's correct, yes. Or not, not 2018, that's.
Correct, not 2018. Now, as part of this use, the developer is asked to use them as short-term vacation rentals, correct?
That was part of the application, at least at some point in time.
Okay, and is that actually, are they actually still pursuing that, it's on a appeal, separate appeal?
It was included as a separate appeal.
Okay, so they're still seeking to use them as short-term vacation rentals, correct?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
At least as of the last information.
Haven't been told otherwise.
If you haven't been told otherwise, it's still in their plan that they've notified the town, correct?
Yes.
So motels, hotels, not defined terms, short-term vacation rentals, are you familiar with those?
I am.
What is the typical?
Reluctantly.
Reluctantly, I, I asked that with almost a smile on my face, and it's, it's appeared. Now, I know you had to deal with a lot with that in the city of Asheville. Typical characteristics of a short-term vacation rental include many different families coming in and out, correct?
Yes.
Regular basis turnover, correct?
Yes.
Checking in maybe for one night, could be three nights, could be five nights. No minimum or maximum amount of time, correct?
Correct.
All right, those type of characteristics are consistent with motels and hotels, are they not?
Yes.
Okay, so dwelling unit, excuse me, dwelling means detached building, but not including motels and hotels. Multifamily dwelling says dwelling containing three or more dwelling units. Okay, so we know that they're planning on using short-term vacation rentals. You've testified that those are like motels and hotels, which means that they're not a dwelling, which means this is not a dwelling multifamily, because we're not dealing with a dwelling that contains three or more dwelling units, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, can I go back to something? I realized I stated something incorrectly.
Absolutely, if you.
So there was an application that included a request for short-term rentals, but I realized the subsequent application, the last site plan we received, removed short-term rentals, and it was just for residential uses.
But your, I, I think you did also testify that that issue is currently on appeal, correct?
Whether or not short-term rentals are permitted in the Mountain Village District is on appeal.
Correct, so they're still saying, if I'm hearing you right, your opinion, and then we'll back up, your opinion, you were asked by the developer whether they could be used on this site, were you not?
Correct.
And you said they could not, correct?
Correct.
And they've now appealed that decision, correct?
Yes.
Because they want to use, well, presumably because they'd like to use them on this site.
Yes, however. Right, that part I don't know, but.
Well, you have to rule on the, the objection before Ms. Tuck answers.
Can you repeat it again?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd be repeating, he was asking what the developer's intent was, and I was objecting, because that's asking for the developer's.
I would draw that, I would draw that question and ask it in a different way, I think we asked it before. You've not received any information other than the appeal, I mean, essentially saying they're, they're saying you're, ah, it's late, I apologize.
Yeah, no.
The appeal is of your determination that you can't use them on this zoning district, correct?
That is correct, however, the current site plan does not include short-term vacation rentals.
If they were successful on the appeal, could they then use it on, on a site that's zoned Mountain Village?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, it may not be on the site plan, if their appeal is successful, they would be able to use it on this site. Correct?
I, I mean, their appeal about whether or not it could be, short-term rentals could be allowed in Mountain Village, could apply to other properties, they own other property and that is also zoned Mountain Village.
Could apply to any of them.
Yeah. As far as I know, their intent on this property is not to do short-term rentals, it's to do residential dwelling units, and I haven't been told otherwise.
So may I ask a question? So that was my question, so they have not come back and said to you, we may want to do this in the future, use of short-term rentals?
Correct, they have not said that.
Their application strictly says.
Their, their application is for residential dwelling units. If we issue a permit for residential dwelling units, that's all they get. If they wanted to change that later, they would have to apply, new application for a change of use.
Okay, thank you.
Issue term of use allowable in this area?
It's the town's position that they are not permitted in Mountain Village. They are only allowed in commercial shopping zoning district.
When, when they submit applications, we've talked about the, the fact that they're allowed to make changes to the site plan, as we've seen multiple site plans that are vastly different from the type of development. When the, when they submit the application, are they allowed to submit an application for a different thing on the same thing? Can you keep changing the, the type of thing that they're requesting?
You, you can make an amendment to change the use, which is, I think, what you're asking, but they can't change it to a use that's not permitted. So the town's position is short-term rentals are not.
Can change.
To follow up on that question, they can't change it to something that's not permitted. However, if this appeal is successful, it would be something that would be permitted, and then they could change it to do that at that point, correct?
Yes, in theory, yes.
Yes, okay.
Without it needing to be a new application, it would be a change of revision to the current application.
As long as the permit hasn't been issued, if the permit's been issued, they would need to apply for what we call a change of use application.
So once the permit's issued, they're locked in place for what they applied for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. How long can this go on for?
It can go on.
For years?
I mean, there's no end, there's nothing in the statutes, there's nothing in our ordinance that say it can only go on for a certain period of time. There is that six-month window, if not, if there's no communication, if we ask for information, we don't receive it, or we don't receive any feedback.
Right, but if they keep in touch with you, they can keep on changing.
If they show continuous progressive evolution and advancement, then yes, they can keep going.
Okay.
I'd like to follow up on that. That's your opinion on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's look at the statute. It says if a permit application is placed on hold at the request of the applicant for a period of six months or more, or the applicant fails to respond to comments, or provide additional information reasonably requested by the local or state government, then it is, and I'm fast-forwarding, the application review is discontinued, and the development regulation in effect at the time of permit processing is resumed, applies to the application. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, if they don't respond, if, excuse me, if they put it on hold for six months, don't ask to go back, it's discontinued. They don't respond for six months, it's discontinued, correct?
Yes.
If they don't provide additional information reasonably requested for six months, it's discontinued. Correct?
Yes.
And you heard Ms. Eisenhower's testimony that between May 17th, 2021. And you heard Ms. Eisenhower's testimony that between May 17, 2021, and November 17 of 2021, she did not receive the landscaping plan certified by a licensed landscape architect, correct?
That is correct, but we did receive information from the applicant.
So, that would be a response, but not the additional information, correct?
We did receive additional information from the applicant.
Did you receive the information that was requested by Ms. Eisenhower? The landscape plan by a landscape architect?
Between?
May 17, 2021, and November 17, 2021.
The October plan had landscaping on it, but not prepared by a licensed landscape architect.
And Ms. Eisenhower testified that she did not consider that to be a landscaping plan. So, again, ask the question.
I'm going to object just to say that this characterization of Ms. Eisenhower's testimony, she testified that she received everything she asked for.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear it all. Can you please repeat that?
Yeah, I was just objecting to the characterization of Ms. Eisenhower's testimony. I believe she testified multiple times that the remittances in the October 2021 revised site plan addressed her concerns, so that was my objection as to the characterization.
Sustained.
If I may be heard before you rule on the objection. She also testified that she did not receive that information. So, it's not a mischaracterization. It accurately reflects that she says she did not receive the landscaping plan. So, I'll return to my question to Ms. Tuck.
We're gonna rule on that. It's this board's duty to recall the evidence that was presented, not what the lawyers tell you it is, what you all recall it is. And so, if the question that was objected to and sustained wants to be appealed by Mr. Nor, which he can do, then the whole board can make a ruling on it, which is what I would suggest that we do now.
Okay.
I wouldn't wanna go dig up through all the papers, but the thing that I'm picturing is the four or six things that Adrian had asked about. The only one of them that had anything expanded to it was the one about the landscape requirement, citing that this is required per the ordinance, and that's where it's based. That later, Ms. Eisenhower was saying, you know, she was receiving all the things she'd needed for the application, but she never did receive the landscape plans, which to this day, I don't think anyone argues. I think she said they haven't still. So, if that was part of the.
Yeah, we're just looking at.
That's why I'm recalling back to.
We're not trying to figure out what Adrian said and whether or not what the question was asked was proper. We're, it's your duty to do that, right? Your duty to recall it, everyone else's individual duty to recall it. We're looking at the objection, which was, as stated by Mr. Portnoy, a mischaracterization of her evidence. Do you want to hear what her answer is, or do you want to sustain the objection into which Mr. Nor could ask it a different way?
Well, I was saying, I think we should overrule the objection because I think that that statement was incorrect as well.
Okay. That is objection.
I agree.
Okay, okay. So, we will overrule the objection.
Can you restate the question?
Yeah, sorry.
I will try to recall it. I think, variation on the theme, I think my question was, Ms. Eisenhower testified that she did not receive the landscaping plan she'd requested between May 17, 2001, and November 17, 2001, correct?
I think that's correct. However, I don't believe that that is relevant here.
Okay, so, I've been pulled up. She asked for a landscaping plan certified by a landscaping architect, correct?
She did.
May 17, 2001?
Yes.
So, that's additional information that she requested, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And she did not receive that between May 17, 2001, and November 17, 2001, correct?
Yes. But this doesn't say that you shall provide all information. We did receive some information that was requested within that time period. We received information. We didn't receive it all. We fully expected all of it to come eventually. That is part of the dialogue that customarily occurs between the plan reviewers and the developer, the applicant.
And I've just thrown up, because we had a little conversation about this earlier too. And I'm reading, this is from 54-35. "The application shall include such other information as may be necessary to determine conformance with and provide for the enforcement of this article." The application has to contain it, correct? She asked for it to be provided in response to an application that was submitted, didn't she?
She did. Your question was whether or not the landscape plan was submitted. It wasn't, but we did have information that would help support conformance with the plan or with the requirements, yes.
But not the landscape.
Not the landscape plan required by a landscape architect, but that would come eventually before a permit is issued.
But not part of the application.
We received landscape information as part of the application.
When was that?
In October.
But not sealed stuff. Excuse me, not provided by a landscape architect, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So, it is perfectly normal to submit a set of requests or ask for additional information, review your plan, go back and say, oh, you forgot this one thing, or, oh, I noticed something else, can you please supply this other information for us on your next revision? That's pretty customary. So, I fully expect that we would have received a landscape plan when the time was right.
I'm gonna move in a different direction. This is NC GenStat 16406, and I'm just going over for the board. These are the decisions on appeal section, and it says, "The board shall determine contested facts and make decisions within a reasonable time." Then says, "When hearing an appeal, the board may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify the decision appealed from, and shall make any order, requirement, decision, or determination that ought to be made. The board shall have all the powers of the official who made the decision." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
In this context, the board can substitute their judgment and decision for yours, correct?
Objection, it's calling for a legal conclusion that she's not testifying, being able to determine. I mean, it's different than what she applies in her role as a zoning administrator. Now she's asking, now he's asking you, or asking her to determine what your role is, which is not within the scope of her role as a zoning administrator.
Sustained. Can you reword the question?
I absolutely can. The statute says that the board may reverse, affirm wholly or partly, or may modify the decision appealed from. Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
That's what it says the board can do, correct?
Yes.
In that context, you had mentioned the Planner's Dictionary, and how you had looked at the project and apartment courts and housing projects when the October submission came in, correct?
I didn't, no. I mean, I didn't look at the Planner's Dictionary when it came to those.
Okay. I'll rephrase and I'll start. When the October submission came in, you said you looked at it to determine whether it was a group development or not, whether you had any concerns about that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As part of that, did you look at the definition of apartment courts or housing developments?
I didn't. I didn't, because the definition says two or more principal buildings. So, I wouldn't even get that far because I stopped when it was.
You chose not to do that, though, as part of your analysis.
Yeah.
And as we read on the statute, the board may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify that decision, correct? That's what the statute says. Okay, so the board could look at the definitions of those and make a different decision, correct? Okay. So, when we look at the apartment court definition. It says, "An apartment court shall be deemed to include those multifamily dwellings that contain the principal means of access to the dwelling unit therein from a court or place or side yard." Did I read that correctly?
Can't tell.
I'm sorry, I can bring.
Yep.
Okay. And it actually gives a picture of an example of that, correct?
Yep.
Central entrance or central portion of the building, correct?
Yeah.
Two wings going off the side?
Yes.
Common entrance down the center?
Yes.
This is from the October 2022 submission. You have a center component, correct?
I don't know if I agree with that.
Okay. You don't agree that it appears to have two wings going off the sides?
It is an articulated building, but I don't see a court. I don't know where the main entrance is, although I presume it's on the rear.
That would be where all the parking is. Okay. So, all the parking is centered in, essentially, if I were to say this building looks like it's hugging the parking, is that fair characterization?
Yeah.
That parking would lead down towards the building, correct?
Presumably, yeah.
And typically, you would enter the building from the side where parking is located?
Again, I'm not sure where the entrances are. They could be on the, yeah. I mean, oftentimes, there's multiple entrances, some on the ends, sometimes in the middle.
Okay, but they're not indicated here?
No.
Okay. And that sort of goes to another point, that information wasn't provided to you at this point, correct?
Correct.
Quick interruption. Is that a question you asked? Where are the entrances?
It wasn't necessary.
I have a question also. In our notebooks, we have several landscape compliance plans. Why are these not? It seems like we're being told that these were never submitted. Is it because the plans were changed for the buildings, and so they need to be revised?
A landscape compliance plan was submitted with the October submittal.
Okay.
And possibly before, I have to go back, I would have to go back and double-check the previous submittals. I know that the most recent submittal, the one that we've been talking about with the single building, included a landscape plan, and it was prepared by a licensed landscape architect.
And I, just a couple of follow-ups on that. I don't think our position has ever been that they were never provided. It was that, they were not provided within the six-month window when they were requested. And my follow-up question to Ms. Tuck is, that plan right there is dated what?
October.
Excuse me, I'll ask it a different way. That plan was included with the October 2022 submission?
Yes.
And I do believe you're correct. If you were to look at the August 8, 2022, you would also find landscape plans, if you want to flip to that and just confirm me, correct? I think it might be right before.
Yeah.
Other direction.
Well, it's not in this.
I may approach, just.
Yeah. This is the August 8. Yep. Yeah, sorry. I'm used to them being in the back.
No, I was looking for that too every time I go to them. So, it was provided August 8, 2022, is the earliest time that that was provided by a licensed architect.
Yeah.
And that would be almost 15 months after they were first requested by Ms. Eisenhower. Correct?
Correct.
I may have just a second to confirm my client. I may be done, and I know we're already overlying my position. Interindulgence.
Glad you found that.
Okay. I would like to revisit some of the testimony you just gave about the short-term rentals, and whether that's still part of their plan or not. I'm gonna direct you to RD 127. I've blown up a paragraph. I think it is the, second to last paragraph up there. It says, "While the landowner's plans for the dwelling units have not changed, and previous to that, they had indicated short-term rentals, correct?"
Yes.
Okay. "It has removed any notes relating to short-term rentals from the revised master plan." So, it took the information off the plan, but according to the letter, its plans have not changed. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And further, at the end, it says, "The landowner will address your October 7, 2022, letter on short-term rentals separately from the planning board's approval of the application." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
So, again, I don't think you were trying to say anything incorrectly, but did you recall this provision in the 170 pages of documents? Or did you just forget that they had said this?
I forgot that they had said that.
So, as of the time of submitting.
I knew it was under appeal, so I knew that this was something they were still interested in.
So, when you previously said that it was no longer their intention, you misspoke, correct? Based on this letter?
That's fair, yes.
And it was still their intention as of this letter to continue to use short-term rentals, correct?
According to that letter, yes.
Based on that, I think your testimony was that short-term rentals are like motels and hotels, correct?
They, well, they are and they aren't. So, yes, in the manner that you described, they are with transient occupancy.
Okay. I believe those are my questions.
Thank you. Does the board have any? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Mr. Henning. Yeah, but if the board has any questions, please ask now.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Tuck?
Give me a minute, please.
I'm sorry?
Give me a minute.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm also.
Are we allowed to stop? Or should we finish?
Well, we should likely finish, Ms. Tuck.
Okay, that's fine.
And I hate that it's.
Yeah, I mean, very few questions.
Just give us a minute, because we're still contemplating a question.
Yeah, I had one. Yesterday, they went into a lot of detail about the impact of the traffic on the roadway going up to the property on the neighborhood, on the road itself, safety, all that. How does the change in the site plan address the road safety? I see that it addresses parking or things like that, but the road itself and the traffic associated with it.
If it changed?
The plans that we have don't show any proposed improvements to the road, either before the most recent plan or currently. So, we don't know. That would, because that's work that would occur within a right-of-way, that it can be part of this development application, but it's often a separate application.
And let me just remind the board. The hearing that we're here to determine is not about traffic or safety or property values. That was to establish standing. We're here based on these appeals. So. Good question, but remember, we're here on the appeals. The evidentiary hearing was opened up before we heard testimony on the appeals. The hearing that was related to traffic and property values was so that the groups could be determined to be parties with standing.
At one point, when talking about using Planner's Dictionary to determine what kind of a building it would be, you said that you weren't necessitated to use that. How do you determine? What are the tools you use? How do you determine what a building is or is not? If you don't use the Planner's Dictionary?
We have our own definitions, and I think we're obligated to use our definitions first. And, and I think we're obligated to use our definitions first. And in the absence of any other definitions, we may look at other references, of which that is one. But I never went that far because it wasn't necessary.
Okay.
Based on our definition.
Any other questions from the board? Scott, you have more? Okay.
So the, last question, you may not be the right person to ask, and it may, but hopefully you can, you can. It sounded to me very much like you and Ms. Eisenhower disagreed about whether or not it was a new application that came in October, whether it's a separate and brand-new application as written in it says, "Original in October." And she said that she came with the realization tonight that it was a new application. But you said that you disagree. How is that, is that a judgment call? Is that a?
I, I think I said, I think I hesitated on that and said that I don't think I agree. And I, I think I would have to go back and study it based on information that was shared tonight. But I don't know that fundamentally it matters because the standards that were in place at the October application are the same standards that were in place in the May application. It's the same ordinance that applied.
If I had a question to react to, let me ask you, based on the question that was asked.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think you were just, I can't, you were, right, Ms. Nor. Based on those questions, if you've got just a.
Additional, but it could be.
Yeah.
Ms. Tuck, you mentioned that you didn't think it would matter, okay? Because the standard hadn't changed, but I want to ask a couple of questions about that. If they were separate applications, okay? And the May application was not taken off hold or responded to within six months, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That would have meant it discontinued under the ordinance, correct? If they're separate.
If they're separate, yes.
If they're separate, okay. And under that ordinance, and I can pull it back up if you'd like to see it, says the rules, when it is pulled out, when it resumes permitting, the rules in place at that time apply, correct?
Yes.
And the first time the May application is mentioned again in the timeline, and I have a big timeline to share with you all once it's our turn to present, isn't until January of 2022, correct?
Sorry, say that again?
So if that discontinuation occurs in November 2021 because of failure to respond or failure to pull off hold, and it's a separate application?
In October?
November, I'm sorry. If the May 2021 application is discontinued in November 2021 because of a failure to respond or pull it off of hold and it is a separate application, follow me at this point?
I thought it was the November application or the November submittal that.
The October submittal.
I mean, the October submittal.
Well, I think what we're trying to say is there was the May application and it is our, my client's contention that the October is separate, separate application.
Yes.
If they're separate and the May one is discontinued in November of 2021 for failure to respond, the ordinance says the rules that are in place when the permit continues again are the ones that apply, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And May 7th, the May 17th application isn't referenced by the developer again until January 2022, correct?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look at the record.
And I can pull it up.
So there was, there was the May application. Then there was an October application. Then there was a November.
Expiration of the May, I think that's what he said.
Right, but October came before November.
Correct, but we consider, what we're talking about, you said there's no, doesn't matter if they're separate or together. And, and what I'm asking you about is if they're separate applications, you have a May application, you have an October application. And the developer in this case, his whole position has been there under the May application. But if that application was discontinued, then the rules apply when it was picked back up in January of 2022. That's what I'm asking. And I'll pull up the.
So what I'm struggling with is that you have two applications. Based on what you described, you have two applications that overlap in time. And you can't, it's my opinion, you cannot have applications for the same piece of property at the same time, two separate applications for the same property at the same time. So it needs to be one application.
Well, that's your position in that that should not happen, correct?
We do have standards, I mean, we have in our ordinance today. It does say you cannot have simultaneous applications.
Back then, it did not, though, correct?
Yes, but we don't accept simultaneous applications. There's no practical way to, to process it. You can't have like, well, if you don't like this one, I want to do this one. If your planning board doesn't approve this one, we're going to do this one. We don't do that. It has to be a new application for a lot of the reasons that we've been discussing tonight.
Well, then I'll remind you of the November submission that was called an alternative, correct?
Yes.
So you accepted two alternative competing applications at the same time?
Well, we didn't because we said that the, that revision of the plan, it's one application with multiple revisions. And the revision that included the SPA, they describe it as an alternative. And I wish we, you know, we were focused on the fact that that would have made it a conditional use. Would have been great in hindsight to say, oh, and by the way, you can't have an alternative application, but the matter becomes moot because they remove it out of the plan based on that conditional use.
I guess I'm just trying, your, your testimony is that you don't accept alternative applications, correct?
We don't accept more than one application for the same property at the same time. Yeah, but just because they say it doesn't mean that we accept that or that we think that that's how it should be processed.
When did you notify them that that was not an acceptable application?
Well, again, we focused on the SPA facility as being a conditional use and that that wouldn't be acceptable. If they had said, "We want to proceed with the conditional use permit," then we would say, "Okay, well, your other application, this other version doesn't apply. This is the version we're going with."
Did you notify them that this alternative would not be accepted?
No, be, again, we just concentrate, when you have more than one problem with a site, you don't necessarily, or an application or a submittal, you don't necessarily like. We, we went with what we thought was the biggest red flag.
So I have a question about the, regardless of the, the adding the SPA or taking it away, but keep it back up there. The, up above, it seems like they refer to this application on October 13th as that's when they submitted this application, the October 13th one. Like, that's the begin date. I don't know why, but that's, that, they apparently have abandoned the May thing. Now they're, and if you look back at the October 13th new submittal, they start over on that date for some reason. I, I don't.
So let me, let me go.
And I missed that, that.
Let me get to the October 13th submittal.
I'll throw it up there if you need a particular question.
No, I want to get to the actual submittal.
Site plans?
Or the actual submittal. I got November, sorry.
I think it's RD 11.
Yeah. Great, okay, so. So it's, it's just very peculiar, the, the terminology that a lot of people use when they submit stuff. I think, you know, you've heard tonight a lot of reference to application, to submittals, to re-submittals, to amendments, to revisions, to. People frequently confuse these terms and overlap these terms and misapply these terms. In May, we received an actual application form. That is, an application for a zoning permit. And with that came a site plan. This submittal in October did not come with a new application form. They describe it as an application. The site plan is part of that application and it, you know, it's, it appears to be a revision. Also, this is, sorry, this is a, a site designer issue, but you'll notice you have these bars on the side. So all site professionals use their, they have this title block and it'll label all of the various versions of the plan and date them. And they put the initials of the person oftentimes, or how many pages were submitted or the person who drafted it. These are revisions. That's what the purpose of these lines on the block is to identify the revisions. So this is a revision to a May application.
Ms. Tuck, can I ask a question?
Yes.
When, when an applicant submits an application for a site plan, are they assigned a number? An, an application number?
They are now under our system, yes.
Not back then?
I think back then, oh, Adrian, Adrian's. I, I don't know that I can answer that. I would, I would have to ask another staff person.
Because I guess my point is if, if it was two separate permits, two separate applications would have two separate numbers. If it was initial application and amendments, it would stay with the original application number throughout the process, I would think.
Yeah.
So we, but we don't have anything in this record that says that it was the same number or not?
Uh, we don't have that in the record. That I'm aware of.
Is there somewhere we could find that out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we should be able to, but again, I mean, I can tell you just based on the way this has all been handled and submittled, it's.
I agree with that, yes.
Submittals are done.
You got REV 1, REV 2, REV 3.
Yeah, well, that's, that's me. That's my notes.
No, no, I mean, that's typically how you, I know, I've worked in drawn for my whole life and that's how they usually get REV 1, and they fill out that block as to who made the changes and the dates.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Nor, you're done? Okay. Any questions from the board in between? Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. Ms. Tuck, I would ask you just to turn to what's tab four, RD 017. And this is an email from Sean Sains, who is a colleague of Chris Day. And Chris Day is actually, see, see it on this email. Do you see, and it's dated October 13th, 2021, correct?
Yes.
That's the same date as the revised site plan you were just discussing, correct?
Yes.
And in Ms. Sains' email, she specifically says, "This re-submittal is in response to our initial submittal for May 17th," correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there may have been some inconsistencies between Mr. Day and Ms. Sains, but this email is directly referring to the May 17th application and site plan that was submitted that day, correct?
Yes.
I also wanted to take a quick moment to address Ms. Hoffman's question about how long can this take? After the developer applicant HS Robinhood submitted the October 18th, 2022 revised site plan, did you place that site plan on the planning board's November, November 1st agenda?
Yes.
And did you issue a staff report as to whether or not the board, your recommendation was for the board to approve that site plan?
I did.
Okay, and that's in the record, I believe. Tab 28, so it's at 169. Art, and then if you could turn to RD 170. And there's a section that says, "Staff recommendation. Based on the staff's review, the proposed Robinhood development complies with the minimum technical standards in place at the time of application. Staff recommends approval with the minor corrections noted in the staff report." Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
And that was your, your recommendation based on your review of the October 2020, October 18th, 2022 revised site plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Did that vote ever happen?
No.
Why not?
Uh, the applicant or the appellant submitted their appeal. And, yeah, before the planning board could hear it.
So was it any action of HS Robinhood that caused the board not to vote?
No.
Mr. Nor asked, also suggested that the board could turn to the Planner's Dictionary of Apartment Court to determine that the October 18th, 2022 site plan constitutes a group development. Do you recall him asking those questions?
Yes.
In order to do that, would the board have to disregard the definition of group development, which requires two or more primary structures?
I don't know that you have to completely disregard it, but.
I guess what I'm asking is.
Would it be somewhat in conflict?
That, and that's my question, is that the board would first have to look to the definition and determine under the zoning ordinance before they could look ever at some outside source, correct?
Yes.
And they are bound by what the definition is in the zoning code, correct?
Yes.
And the zoning code requires two or more principal structures, correct?
Correct.
So I have a question then. So you could have an apartment building built in, in one of the areas. So an apartment building that's one building is okay, but an apartment building is, or is, yeah, is okay, but an apartment building that's two buildings is not?
Right, so 100 units and one building is okay, 100 units and two buildings would not be. It's not a great code. We're not defending the quality of it. We're just saying that's how it has to be interpreted.
Uh, Mr. Nor asked, Mr. Nor also asked you if there were, I guess, some characteristics that were shared between a motel, a hotel, and short-term rentals, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but would you agree with me that under the zoning code, those are three very separate and distinct types of uses of property?
I would, I would agree that they are different. To what degree they're different, I think that's subject to some interpretation.
But a short-term rental is not by definition a motel, correct?
I, I think they're all forms of lodging, but different forms of lodging.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Just to follow up on those questions, I think I'd be brief. The ministerial review question, Ms. Tuck. Your recommendation for ministerial approval is based on the assumption that ministerial approval is the right process, correct?
Yes.
And that's what's on appeal before this board, correct?
Yes, if it's determined that it is a group development, I would agree it has to go through a quasi-judicial process.
And so your recommendation isn't you saying, "I think this is a good development." You're just saying, "If it is ministerial review, then I think it's met the standard," correct?
Yes.
Not giving an opinion on the quality of the development, although it's a good idea, correct?
Correct.
Conflict between the two, sort of where we ended here. We went through the definition of dwelling units. Multifamily dwelling is what you had concluded this was. And we talked about what dwelling is, and it had an exception, that dwelling does not include motel or hotel use, correct? We also talked about how short-term rentals are like those use, correct?
Yes.
And that motel and hotel are not defined in your code.
Correct.
So, and you're left to decide whether that fits within the definition of dwelling, correct?
So we're entering territory of like a, a short-term, a short-term rental is a dwelling unit. And so we're starting to, so it is a dwelling unit by definition, so.
Unless it is motel, hotel, which isn't defined, and you said, your testimony was.
Well, hotel, hotel, motels are defined under the building code. I mean, they, they have different characteristics.
But to be clear, your building code is not part of, that's not this?
No, it's not this.
Totally different.
Yeah.
Correct? Maybe not a lot else?
I elaborate, so hotels don't usually have all of the features that a dwelling unit does. I mean, most hotels and motels do not have full kitchens. I mean, most hotels and motels do not have full kitchens or, you know, so they're not, dwellings are designed to, for, for long-term occupancy, and it has complete, by definition, it has complete housekeeping facilities, sanitation, place for sleeping. So basically, a bathroom, a bedroom, and a place for cooking, a kitchen, so.
Follow up on that. Go ahead.
I know several people who live in motels now. They live, they own, I mean, they own, they have a room in a hotel that is theirs, that they go back and forth to, and they don't have to check in all the time. It's theirs, and they rent it on a monthly basis, so.
So they're not staying short-term?
They're not staying short-term, no. So it is a dwelling, it is definitely a dwelling, and, and people are using motels nowadays for all sorts of, you know, all sorts of purposes. And it's the same with a hotel, you can rent a hotel room for a-
So lodging, lodging by definition is for transient occupancy, which is people staying there for less than 30 days at a time. So if somebody's staying in a hotel for more than 30 days at a time, it's not a hotel, or it's not being used as a hotel, it's not transient, so.
Even if some of the units are used on a, on a regular day, you know, on a daily basis, and others don't.
Then it's mixed, so it's, it's some, something else, it's not necessarily a hotel.
Yeah, it's actually what's going on now.
It's very complicated, I mean, this is what's happening like everywhere, and, and a lot of codes haven't caught up to-
Exactly.
-defining all of these things, and, yeah.
Yeah, but it's going on, yeah.
And if I can ask, if you just listed number of air Christmas, define dwelling, kitchen, etc., bedrooms, etc., where are those shown?
Well, they're not.
So you have no information that that's actually what's going to be put in the development because it hasn't been provided to by development?
Well, they're, they're described, again, the professionals who prepared the plans described them as residential dwelling units.
Letter I showed you earlier, though, indicates that developers still intend to use them for the short-term rentals, correct?
Yes, but short-term rentals are dwelling units.
Well, I think that's-
Used on a short, you know, used for short-term occupancy.
Those are-
Any questions from the board? Do we have any further questions from attorneys? So everybody is done with Ms. Tuck? Okay, Ms. Tuck, you are excused?
We have to ask the gentleman in the back. Got your grandmother's funeral's on Saturday?
For everyone, my grandmother died, I don't mind, I'll be there extremely early Saturday or late tomorrow night to get to the funeral. And that was kind of the reasons we've been, for instance, the whole first day, we were just, let's get to the meds.
Right.
So we, we have, tomorrow, we're just going to, we won't adjourn tonight, we will continue this until tomorrow unless I hear objections from anybody, otherwise.
I just would want to offer that. In no way was I going to be one of people supporting for making your grandmother's funeral, and I'm happy to find a date that allows for him to leave tomorrow, or to make that, but I don't think anyone, I am for that, we picked these days.
We did pick two days next week also.
And that Monday, and that Tuesday, won't be able to do that Tuesday, I'm not sure about that filing Wednesday.
We had the 31st and the 1st held out on people's calendars.
Okay, I was under the impression-
Yeah, we picked those days, I thought the calendars were clear, I had everyone's-
Yeah, I thought that everybody, all parties were-
Cleared our calendars.
We still can find another date, too, again, I want to be clear, we don't want to keep Mr. Gordon.
No, I understand that, but there's other dates, now we're getting told we can't make those other days, we cleared our calendar and said, because I thought all parties were acceptable to these dates that were given to us.
Yeah, like a month ago.
My understanding is there's another case, other appeals, and those dates were there. We actually have a procedural stipulation in the record that talks about just these three dates. Those were the dates that were provided to us for this appeal because there's apparently other appeals that are unrelated to us, and my understanding from the board meeting in December and from our procedural stipulation that only has these three days, was these were three days held for our appeal. We're happy to like coordinate with y'all, but that's just to address your, your question about like why we don't have those dates held.
Can anyone begin earlier tomorrow?
That's what I say, can we, is it possible, and I don't know, that this witness can go first tomorrow? Because he said he can leave late Friday, I'm just trying to make it all work for everyone.
I'm happy to be here until 10:00 tomorrow night, so just understanding the timeframe, I'm happy to be here till 9:00.
What if he's not next on the list? So I guess that's my question, I don't know how yours is.
He's next on the list, that's our point, is he's got to present his full case, I believe it will take some time.
And we can't change that? Doesn't work.
I mean, yes, do judges and allow witnesses to be taken out of order? Absolutely, would it dis, would it be dis, would, would, it would, it would make this very disjointed.
Okay, that's, um-
To throw somebody off and then bring up somebody else and then go, what did he say? But, but I'm happy to, to look at other dates, I'm happy to start earlier tomorrow, and, but I don't know, because we had some schedules here that couldn't start till 5:00, and that's why we started every day at 5:00 and cut off at 9:00.
Looked, I have things that have filled prior to this as well.
You do have things prior.
Finish tomorrow?
Are we not going to, we are not going to finish tomorrow.
I was asking, if we didn't. What then do we do with the fact that we don't have any more dates? We just look for dates to-
Yeah, we'll find another date.
We have one other date, like February 9th.
But then my question now is, can we adjourn from this appeal, hear the other appeals in the middle, and then go back to this appeal, or is that-
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
That's a good idea.
I don't, I don't know if we can, that's why I'm asking legally if we're allowed to do that.
I don't know what staff would want to, or if, I mean, that's going to be up to you.
Let me ask on behalf of the town administration, and I think probably other parties involved, when you say go on and hear other appeals, you mean on the other days we've reserved?
Yes.
Yeah, we are not prepared to hear those appeals.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
Okay. So those dates are now open.
What about February 9th?
In the evening? In the evening?
I'm just saying, February 9th, we should clear that off, whether we come tomorrow and do what we're going to do, or whether, because of everyone's schedule and-
Week of the night.
-medical procedures on everybody's part, I think.
So we have it scheduled on our agenda right now, February 9th is already proposed for us to be here at 5:00 PM.
I can be at 5:00.
We also have the regular scheduled board date later in February.
Right, yeah. That would have been like the 23rd.
I don't want to, Mr. Gordon, I don't want to keep you here late, it's a long drive back to eastern North Carolina, and it's your grandmother's funeral, and I'm sorry for that, and it's taken a very long time to get to where we are, nobody's fault. What I want, what I want to say is, if we could start early, finish early, so we could get one of the, one of the witnesses on the road, you're probably likely not going to get her tomorrow, so I'm, I'm saying, if you left tonight, it wouldn't matter. As long as you can be back February 9th.
I believe that's the case, I can meet her February 9th.
And, and then you, you all would have to, and then Jesse, you too, you would have to make sure that your calendars, but we have it, we have it February 9th.
Yeah, we're fine on the 9th.
And, and really what would happen is if Mr. Nor flew through his testimony, and then Mr. Portnoy called up one witness and was like, oh, my next witness was going to be Mr. Gordon, we could then say, all right, enough for tonight, and come back on the, on the 9th.
So if I'm, understand-
For my color, so that everyone's, my brother, he comes from Johnson City, he's operating until probably 7:00 or 8:00 tomorrow, takes about an hour to get here from King's Court. I'm probably not going anywhere before 9:00 anyway, so I never plan to not be here, even at the funeral, so I don't, I don't know how long Mr. Nor's presentation would be, we don't want to rush it, but if it's two hours, then there's still two hours, and we would certainly accommodate my testimony towards the beginning.
So let's plan on going tomorrow, starting at 5:00 PM till 9:00 PMish, go with that plan. If we do not, we are not going to most likely complete it anyway, and if it gets too late in the night, we do not want to affect your getting to the funeral, so then we could just call it a short night, and we'll reconvene on February 9th. If everybody can confirm tomorrow, is that all right, they can confirm?
Yeah.
You can check your schedules and confirm that, because we already did clear everything, and we'll reconvene on the 9th.
At 5:00?
At 5:00 PM.
So we'll just recess this meeting until tomorrow at 5:00.
Yeah, we can't start earlier because Mr. Nor can't make it earlier tomorrow anyway, so.
Okay.
Okay, so then we are going, at this point, we are going to recess this appeal for tonight, and we will reconvene tomorrow at 5:00 PM.